Columbus, Georgia. This is your City Council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City Manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Tony Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your City Council.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 28th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We are so glad to have you with us. As you can see, our chambers are full tonight. That's representative of the fact that we have a very full agenda. So, we promise you, we'll try to keep things moving along. We know that your business is important, and we're going to get to it as promptly as possible. We have several guests this evening. I'm going to recognize at the appropriate point, but I do want to point out that we have some students here from Central Texas College who are studying government, and they have come to observe us this evening. And so, if you're with Central Texas College, please stand up and let us recognize you.[105.42][105.42](APPLAUSE) Well, thank you all very much. As I always say, you're going to see a lot of good government. So, thank you for coming this evening. And we want to go ahead and kick it off, as we always do, with an invocation. And so, we're going to call forward the Chaplain of the Columbus Police Department, Chaplain Isasi, forward to provide that invocation, consistent with his faith tradition. Good evening.
Good evening. Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you for this time of fellowship. And Father, you said, "Where two or more are gathered in your name, there you are in the midst of them." Lord, just bless this city, Father, from the mayor to every single person that lives here, to include all of public safety and just every single citizen. You said in your Book of Isaiah, "Fear not, for I am with you. Don't be dismayed. I am your God. I will strengthen you. I will help you. I will uphold you in my righteous right hand." Thank you for your strength and your grace, and I just thank you, your graces on this meeting and every citizen. We thank you for these, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir, and thank you so much for what you do in serving this community. Next, we have a special treat. We have the Genshin Elementary School here to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And we're going to ask them to come forward to the clerk's desk, if they would. And as they assemble, if you all would stand and prepare to have them lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our love, which stands one nation under God and the reasonable with loyalty and justice for all.[229.92][229.92](APPLAUSE)
All right. If you would, please, tell us your name and how old you are.
I'm Saxon Anderson, and I'm 10 years old.
I'm Michaela Johnson, and I'm 8 years old.
I'm Caitlin Battle, and I'm 7 years old.
I'm Brooklyn Battle, and I'm 10 years old.
I'm Maddox Anderson, and I'm 8 years old.
I'm Devon Rose, and I'm 7 years old.
I'm Derek Kegler, and I'm 7 years old.
I'm Kayla McCarty, and I'm 8 years old.
I'm Zayn Athmen, and I'm 9 years old.
All right. Well, and you've got some folks with you this evening. If you're a Genshin Elementary School teacher, counselor, parent, supporter, stand up and let us recognize you as well.[285.02][285.02](APPLAUSE) Well, we know you all are proud, as you well should be, and thank you all for coming and helping us out this evening. I hope you can come back again real soon. All right. Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause.[304.12][304.12](APPLAUSE) All right. Well, we have a very special set of guests this evening. We have, as you all may know, for the last 61 years, cities across the United States of America have engaged in sister-city relationships. And this is something that helps broaden the experience, the cultural experience, as well as the economic development opportunities of cities across the United States. And one of our sister cities is Kiryu, Japan. And they have been our sister city since 1977. And through those many decades, there have been various delegations from Columbus that have had the opportunity to go to Kiryu under Mayor Peters and Portechev, at least. And this time, we have the honor of having a special delegation led by Mayor Kamayama, who is here. And I'm going to call Mayor Kamayama up. We have a special proclamation we would like to present, and he would like to bring greetings as well. So, Mayor Kamayama, if you and the delegation would come forward and stand in front of the podium, we'll read a special proclamation.
Columbus City Council members, good evening. I'm Kamayama, the head of Kiryu, Japan, the sister city of Columbus. Please accept my heartfelt thanks for giving us the chance to visit your beautiful city.
Since Columbus arrived, I'm very impressed with the warm welcome extended to us by the people of Columbus.
Columbus and Kiryu have been friends since 1978. We have met and interacted with each other through various exchanges and programs between our cities. Thanks to the past mayors, city councils, and citizens, the relationship between us has been strong and continuous. I would like to take this opportunity to offer my sincere thanks.
But recently, we haven't had a chance to meet each other. Since then, we have had a few opportunities to exchange with each other as sister cities. I have felt certain that these opportunities have been limited to Kiryu sending high school students to Columbus and students from Columbus State University studying in Kiryu. Since taking office as mayor, I have been hoping to visit Columbus, but didn't have the opportunity until now.
Since 2018, Kiryu has faced challenges in its communication with other cities. Thanks to the past mayors, city councils, and citizens, the relationship between us has been strong and continuous. I would like to take this opportunity to offer my sincere thanks.
But recently, we haven't had a chance to meet each other. Since I became the head of Kiryu, I've been trying to visit Columbus, but haven't had a chance.
But in recent years, we have had a few opportunities to exchange with each other as sister cities. I have felt certain that these opportunities have been limited to Kiryu sending high school students to Columbus and students from Columbus State University studying in Kiryu. Since taking office as mayor, I have been hoping to visit Columbus, but didn't have the opportunity until now.
In the meantime, since 40 years ago, Kiryu has faced challenges in its communication with other cities. I'm also concerned about the quality of education for children. I've been visiting Columbus to see if we can provide some assistance.
April 2018 will mark the 14th anniversary of our sister-city relations. We are visiting Columbus now to discuss new ways of continuing sister-city exchanges and to develop other exchange fields, such as sending our junior high school students to Columbus in order to provide opportunities to nurture international education, improve language skills, and further deepen the ties between our two cities.
Thank you for this friendship. I'm glad to see that we can communicate with each other.
In addition to reforming the ties of friendship, we also could have discussed about future exchanges to strengthen these ties. We hope to make our exchange programs more fulfilling than ever.
In conclusion, we appreciate your hospitality to us, and I pray from the bottom of my heart for the city of Columbus increasing development and continued prosperity for all the people involved in our relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Kamayama, we so appreciate those kind words, and we join you in the wish for continued cooperation and relationship. And I want to point out that the mayor and his delegation has presented to council this special gift. And in the absence of our Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to ask Counselor Gary Allen, who actually works with Aflac, that you're very familiar with. And Aflac's been a major partner in this trip and a major sponsor. So, Counselor Allen, if you do the honors of opening that. And as he does, I want to mention that Kiryu is, like Columbus, has a very long history in mill industries and also particularly textiles. And they're quite known worldwide for that, and they have a factory in Detroit. Yes. Thank you so very much. I have a special proclamation to read, and then we're going to call you all forward. This proclamation reads, "Whereas cities, their elected officials, and their citizens often collaborate internationally through international organizations such as Sister Cities International. And whereas Sister Cities International is celebrating 61 years of global citizen and civic diplomatic action and helping support a future where the world's cities, communities, and its citizens can come together in common ground. And whereas Sister Cities International was founded as a presidential initiative by President Dwight D. Eisenhower on September 11, 1956. And since that time, every sitting president has been the honorary chairman of the Sister Cities International. And whereas Sister Cities relationships include educational, economic, cultural, municipal, and humanitarian assistance exchange programs that are mutually beneficial to each community. And whereas on March 28, 2017, Columbus, Georgia welcomes the fellow guests in the delegation from its sister city Kiryu, Japan. The Honorable Mayor Kamayama. We have Mr. Kabiraki. Yes, sir, please. Mr. Ioki. Mr. Shima Kura. Ms. Agawa. Whereas the citizens will welcome the Kiryu delegation at Columbus State University, Columbus High School, Aflac, the South Commons, Kiryu Pavilion, museums, and other area attractions. And whereas the Columbus, Georgia-Kiryu-Japan sister-city relationship has been sustained since 1977 and has remained warm throughout successive administrations. And whereas the City Council and citizens of Columbus, Georgia send heartfelt well wishes to the citizens of Kiryu and consider it a distinct honor to welcome Mayor Kamayama and the Kiryu delegation to the city of Columbus. Now, therefore, I, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 28, 2017, as Columbus-Kiryu Sister-City Day." And we want to point out that we did present to Mayor Kamayama the key to the city so that he may know he and the delegation are always welcome here in Columbus, Georgia. So, sir, thank you so very much for joining us. We know you've had a whirlwind tour these past three days, and we're so happy you came to Columbus, Georgia. Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause.[1022.33][1022.33](APPLAUSE) All right. Next, we have, we'll jump into some of the business we have. We want to call forward Larry Love, who's the interim clerk of Recorder's Court. He would like to give council an update. Mr. Love, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You've seen the report. It's in your package. Asking for some upgrades to be done at Recorder's Court. And I know you have a long agenda, so I'm going to be as quick as possible. What would you prefer, to look at the report or have me just go through it line by line? There's backup materials on every issue. You want line by line? Okay. Are there questions about anything on the report?
Well, I guess, Larry, if you could give us a general overview. So, basically, these are some items that you found as you've come into Recorder's Court that you believe are in immediate need of repair in order to carry forward the mission of Recorder's Court. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. And do you want to just give an overview? I know you don't want to, obviously, this is a thick packet, and I'm not asking you to get down the minutia. Counsel may have some specific questions, but if you could just give us a general overview so that the citizens have the benefit, you know, of just basically what you're asking a council to do.
I'd be happy to. The first item is going to be an upgrade of the sound system down there. One of the issues we've had is you can't hear in Recorder's Court. People come in there, and the case is being called. In order to upgrade that system, it's going to cost us a little over $2,000. The vendor we're using is Everything Musical. They're the same vendor that does Everything in Superior Courts and the other courts in the Government Center. We contracted them to give us a price. So, that's what it'd take to bring that system up. The uniforms that are listed, the personnel down there, I guess the best way to say it is morale's not the best in the world. It's my belief that they're not a team, they're not a unit, and I think the uniforms will go a long way towards making them feel appreciated and being part of one team. And the uniforms, what's unique about them, the company that sent us, that you have a bid with, the city has the bid with, is going to custom-make every one of these uniforms. And the cost is fairly small, at $2,600, to get everybody five shirts and three uniforms and bring them uniformed down there and hopefully improve their morale. Carpet cleaning, the carpets have not been cleaned in a great number of years. It's something that needs to be addressed. The vendor that we've selected is a low bidder. It's also the vendor that works with the Trade Center and cleans all the rooms down there. He said he could get it in about an eight-hour period, and you can see what the bid is on the sheet. The banner we're asking for, the window, the stand there, the drive-through window, has not been opened in over five years. We're in the process now of having some service done on the window, and we're going to open it back up again. But we need a way to let the public know that the window is now open again. So, a banner was the idea to hang up and say, "The drive-through window of Recorder's Court is now open." That's to encourage people to use the drive-through window, rather than have to park in the lot and walk all over there and go through security just to pay a fine. Any questions so far?
Let me ask you, Larry, and it may be best unless counsel wants you to go through each item, which certainly is their prerogative, but I know they've had this, I think, for a while, a couple of days. Did you send it to counsel previously, or is this the first they're seeing it?
This package here was sent to counsel last week.
Okay, good.
I didn't end with the package.
Let me ask you, have you worked with Pam for a funding source?
I have not. What I've asked for is a budget override of approximately $9,500 to take care of these immediate items that need to be addressed.
So, what's that mean, Angelica, budget override? What's that mean?
That would just mean, in accordance to the ordinance that counsel passed in regards to departments going over budget, he's coming before counsel to request that he overrun his budget.
Okay. And what about funding source? Have you, was there other items that maybe this could?
Well, Larry has, I do know he has done some analysis to the budget, trying to identify different line items that were trending under budget. Not sure if we were able to identify a real solid source within the budget, the existing budget, to cover these budget overruns.
Okay. Well, we'll open it up for counsel comment now. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the opportunity to go on a visit of the Recorder's Court. And it's horrible. It's in dire need of fixing. The working conditions are pathetic, and nobody should have to work like that. And the changes that he wants to make with the windows are definitely needed. And I wanted to ask the Finance Department, couldn't we get these funds out of OLOS funds? Wouldn't that, what he wants to do is follow up on that. This is public safety.
Angelica, or, yeah, the question for Mayor Pro Tem is, is there a source from OLOS that this could come from, since it's a court and deals with, obviously, criminal matters?
Well, I mean, Recorder's Court currently has two positions that is funded from the OLOS, two existing positions. So, I mean, if counsel desired to give allocation to this particular court for operations, that's at your discretion.
You're saying those are empty positions, unfilled positions?
No, there's two, well, actually, he does have one unfilled position that's in Recorder's Court. But that is salary savings.
Oh, it's been?
But it's in, but it's in $9,000. But it's been open, it has been vacant for?
Don't we have some contingency funds?
Yeah. And I was going to say, Madam Mayor, if this is something counsel wants, you'd like to do it now, we can, I can take it out of contingency.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we do it now, to get it on the table.
A motion second. We have several counselors wanting to speak. Let's have Counselor Henderson.
Just a couple of points. Obviously, there's some items that we're still going to be waiting on bids, which could impact the total. And of course, this is a capital expense, so it's a one-time expense.
Well, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I want to be clear. I'm talking $9,000. I don't know, I can help with the $9,000, but all this capital, I don't, I don't know about that.
Well, I'm just saying that in, on the cover sheet, just to make sure I understand, number one, list those items that you already have costs for, which is the $9,000 that you're asking for, right?
Exactly.
And under, number two, you're talking about a few items that have not, there's bids that haven't been received yet, right?
Well, listen, for instance, the last time we met, we talked about the possibility of creating another way to pay fines. Sure. I'm in the process now of getting bids on that, and of course, it takes a little while for that to happen.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure we understood what we were authorizing. And then, number three, the 5% for acting supervisor, that is your position, or whose position is that?
When we moved Terry Ezel out of Recorder's Court, there was no one to supervise the judicial side. They're places by themselves.
Right.
I talked to the people that were down there, we discussed everybody, and we came up with one lady who was the right one for the job. First part of February, I appointed her to that position, and what I'd like to do is give her a 5% temporary raise in salary till there's a permanent person in this job that can make a decision on who should occupy that slot.
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little, I'm just interested in hearing, that 5%, is that going to take them to what the other supervisor was making, or is that just a slight bump?
It's just an incentive for her to be the supervisor, take on the additional responsibility. She'll get a 5% raise in salary. And further down, you'll notice that we're working with HR and the University of Georgia to try to see if we can have jobs reclassified. And that time, we'd come back and report from the University of Georgia. But obviously, on personnel issues, we've got to get the University of Georgia to evaluate the new positions, new job descriptions, and we'd be coming back at that time.
What's the impact for the rest of this fiscal year on the 5% bump for that particular individual?
I don't know the individual. I mean, Donna Sanders. I believe she makes, I'm guessing, around $29,000 a year. So, it's, it'll be $1,500 now.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, but I just wanted to make certain that we we understand the amount that we're going to be approving, especially since there's a few things that are still outstanding. You'll come back, I'm certain, when those bids come in.
If you go down to the bottom of the table, recommendations, you'll see a breakdown of each one of those costs.
Down to the bottom on what? I'm sorry?
It was the recommendations.
Right.
Number one, that's what I'm asking for, the $9,405?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. That, but that does not include the 5%, right?
No, it does not.
Okay. And that's what I was getting at. I just wanted to make sure that we knew exactly what we were talking about. I'm fine with doing that. I don't think it's a huge amount. I just want to know what that amount is.
Fair question.
And I wonder, the Mayor Pro Tem and I were having a sidebar about doing a raise through this, a 5% raise. I don't understand that request. We usually don't do raises like this.
Well, Mayor, typically, when we have someone take on a higher level of responsibility, we will do something for them after 90 days in that capacity.
So, if they serve for 90 days, then we give them the salary?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so, I, you know.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, that does sound familiar. Let's see here, we have Counselor Garrett.
I've been over there. Anytime we're going to spend money, we've got to be prudent with our taxpayers' money. And I can tell you that the, basically, the improvements that I saw that he's requested, you walk in the bathroom, you can barely breathe. There's not a seat that you really want to sit down, and so, it's, these are certainly things that would be improvements for our citizens, and a lot of these would be efficiencies to make it easier to pay tickets, that type of thing. So, I've been down there and toured the building, and it's certainly something that I would, I would support. Just to clarify those, the motion that the Mayor Pro Tem supported, was that for the override or was that for all three recommendations? Because I thought it was just for the override, the $9,400. Okay, I just want to be clear.
Okay. All right. And we have Counselor Thomas.
In looking at the items that you have here, Mr. Love, it seems to me that in the ones that you are asking, or that is, that's in the motion, except for the uniforms, those would all qualify under the OLOS infrastructure category, if we, if we needed to do that. And then, looking at the ones that you are going to bring to us later, that you're looking for bids on, all of those are infrastructure. This is the same kind of thing we did when we authorized money for the Boxwood Rec. Center out of the OLOS. It was this kind of stuff. And so, that's another source that I think might be there for you. The uniforms, you know, and I know this is splitting hairs, the uniforms for the two people that are paid out of the OLOS should come out of the OLOS. That's what, that's what we do. We pay for those folks and all of their equipment and so forth. So, it's, it's one of those balancing act kind of things. So, I think... act kind of things. So I think that this, this $9,000, this $9,400 is a insignificant, it's not insignificant amount. It is a, if we, we just need to do this, and I don't think it's gonna make anybody not be able to do what they need to do because we run out of money.
Thank you, councillor.
All right, that, it looks like that concludes discussion. So there's a motion and second to approve a budget override of $9,407.05, and it sounds like we're going to be looking at funding sources from contingency and possibly from OLOS, as it's applicable. And there's no further discussion, so all those in favor of the motion, please state aye. Are there any opposed? All right, May Carey, thank you, Larry. Appreciate all your doing.
May I bring up two more things? One is, last week, you had sent me back to get bids on putting in just a small office area in this area for collections. After looking at it, we could save a lot of money and be a lot more efficient, instead of putting one payment window in that area to put four in there. What happens now, there's two windows up front you can make payments at, and two windows right down the hall that you can go ahead and find out about court. My solution would be to get a bid on it, see what it's gonna cost, and see if we can put those four windows in that corridor there where the public can go directly into it, and have four people to wait on them, rather than two, and make it a lot more efficient. So all I'm asking for now is, give me the ability to go get a bid on it, and then bring it back to you and make that proposal at that time.
Do we need a motion?
No.
I don't like...
That's a new direction. If you tell me I can do it, I'll move on with it.
Go forward and get a bid, and then come back, and, and council obviously will be very interested in what you find.
One last thing, I know you've got a big agenda. Elizabeth, can you come in here and John, just come in here just a minute. These are the internal auditors. They have been working with me since the time, time I've been down there. And Elizabeth has done a great job of doing something really wonderful in Recorder's Court, and rather than me sticking up here and taking credit for it, I want to give her an opportunity. This is Elizabeth Barfield, she's the forensic internal auditor. Please, Elizabeth, tell them about the website.
Well, I'm caught a little off guard by this. Thanks, Larry. For our first meeting of the council, my name's Elizabeth Barfield. I'm a relatively new employee, working with John Redmond. And some of the things that we've been thinking about are improvements for Recorder's Court. And when we started observing what was actually going on, we would sit with the employees and observe their work processes and what a normal day would be like for them. One of the things that we noticed was the telephone rang incessantly. It almost became like background noise. And people were all on the telephone, people were helping people at the customer window, so a lot of times, the telephone just was not getting answered, because everybody is busy doing what they needed to do. When a police officer writes a ticket, it is required that a phone call be made to Recorder's Court in order to find out the price of that fine. So if they're writing 10,000 tickets a week, you're getting 10,000 phone calls to find out how much my fine is. We thought, you know, this is something maybe we need to address. So we've installed an automated telephone system. I know that most people don't like those, but basically, what it does is it welcomes you to Recorder's Court. It answers all the basic questions that you might have. Where is Recorder's Court located? What forms of payment are accepted? What our hours are? And it also shows, tells exactly where we're located. It also says, if, please visit our website, because we've updated our website. You can get additional information there. So we're trying to weed out all of the phone calls that actually make it to someone. If we can answer the questions prior to them getting to someone, that's half the battle. If they do need to talk to someone, they can choose the financial side or the judicial side, the court information. If they need to get directly to someone and they know their extension, they can do that as well. One of the things that we've done in conjunction with that is to implement a new website. And I think if you go to Recorder's Court at Columbus, Georgia, you'll be able to see the new website. It's very pleasing, a lot of white space, different color fonts, different size fonts to kind of draw your attention to certain areas. We talk about acceptable methods of payment. We talk about what is required when payment is made. It's very user-friendly. It's more of a tool now than just informational. We've also added a fine calculator to our website. We don't have online payments yet, which is where we're hoping to go at some point, but right now, at least, we can make a start in answering the questions. How much is my ticket? How much is my fine? So we're hoping that by reducing the phone calls, reducing the walk-in traffic at Recorder's Court, opening the drive-through window, increasing the mail-in of payments, that that's gonna help make things a little more efficient there.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your effort. Mr. City Manager, did you have a comment?
Well, just to, want to be clear, we, you've approved the $9,407.05. You have not acted on the 5% for acting supervisor. You did not. And, and I want Mr. Love to know that he's going to need architectural drawings before we would even, before they can do an RFP for construction activity, and before we would do any work, or having the work done over there. Those are clarifications.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. And Mr. Love, again, thank you so much. Wait, we've got the Mayor Protem. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager, do we need to do a motion today to approve the acting supervisor's position due to need to wait 90 days to do it?
I'm sorry.
We can, I think we can simply follow our existing guideline for that, after 90 days.
Do we need, we don't need a motion for that, do we, Cliff? Yeah, we've...
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that may be clear. They're saying that he, there is no position, and he's asking...
For an existing person.
Yeah, that's, that's our usual...
She's not asking.
Well, we'll keep an eye on that.
All right, I think we've got it.
We have to realize too, that this court is our responsibility.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all. And again, Mr. Love, and thank you all for what you're doing with the Internal Auditor's Office to assist in Recorder's Court. Great improvements, and we appreciate your efforts. Okay, let's see, moving on, we've got the minutes of our January 31 council work session. They've been provided to council, and if there's no suggested changes, we've got a motion from the Mayor Protem and a second from councillor Allen that the minutes be received. All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? All right, great, thank you. And with that, we'll move in to the city attorney's agenda and turn it over to Mr. Fay. Hold on, councillor Woodson.
City Manager, oh, Mr. Love's still here, but he's talking. I went in the website to look at it, and we don't have on, online payments. Are we looking at updating that, where we, people can go out there and use their credit card and just pay online?
Well, yes, and not just in Recorder's Court, but throughout the government, whether it's parking or any other categories.
Do you have like a timeframe, more or less, or what you're looking at?
What's the timeframe for?
Six weeks, three months?
Well, no, it's, we've got a demo coming up in April. It's a part of the court management system. We'll, we'll follow up with you on a specific timeline.
Okay, 'cause I did go on the website to look at, and it is easy to read, but in bright red letters, it says, "No online payments currently accepted."
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Fay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. First item up for business vote is the fire and emergency medical service promotion procedure.
We've got a motion and second for approval. All those, first of all, excuse me, is there any discussion? Seeing that there's none, if you would, record your votes electronically. And it passes.
All right. Next item, we have some zoning public hearings. The first one up is 8186 Veterans Parkway, going from residential office to general commercial for retail restaurant. Recommended approval. Mr. Scott Boyce is here on behalf of the owner, and I think he has some handouts.
Is it in one of your packets, or do you need a handout for rezoning?
I believe it's on ECAP. Is it not?
Is this something that already went to planning?
If it's something new, it should be on ECAP. And we also can put it on the screen. Should we put it on the screen, Mr. Johnson? That way, everybody can see it.
Give me your name and address, Mr. Boyce, and you can go ahead. Good evening, good evening. My name is Scott Boyce. My address is 5767 Roaring Branch Road, Columbus, Georgia. I'm with Woodruff Brokerage Company. This evening, I'm representing Kumar Development. Kumar Development is a local development company whose investors have a proven track record of opening and operating various retail establishments throughout Columbus. Also with me this evening is Nixon Maxi. Nixon is the local engineering owner of the firm here in Columbus, and he will be the engineer on this project. I drag your attention to the site plan we're proposing, numbered 8186 Veterans Parkway, and we're asking you this evening to, in the first reading, to rezone from RO to GC, general commercial. The zoning is for the purpose of encompassing the entire 3.4 acre site. On this, on this sketch, we have four retail buildings, but I do believe we're only build three, with a total, total building size of 35,100 square feet. The proposal is consistent with the future land use map, and is consistent with the city planning maps in this area. And the PAC has sent this forward to you for approval. The eastern boundary line of this site, land is zone general commercial. 12 to 14 acres across the street from Veterans Parkway is zone general commercial. And just northeast, at the intersection of Cooper Creek Road and Veterans Parkway, are three tracks zone general commercial. We will call this, we plan to call this Maple Village, and we will comply with the current, with the Veterans Parkway overlay district, the city ordinance and building codes. In summary, we believe our GC zoning application meets all the requirements of the rezoning application. It is certainly consistent and compatible with surrounding uses. We believe that the city services that are currently available to the site will be sufficient, and we will not have a negative impact on any city services. We respectfully request that you approve our rezoning application. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Are there any questions, Mr. Boyce?
Well, hold on a second. Yes, we've got councillor Garrett.
Has there been any opposition to, to the planning?
Not that I know of. I think PAC, we sent out, and I didn't know of any at that time, and have not heard any motion.
Okay.
Mr. Jones, you want to add anything? Anybody in the audience want to speak in favor of this, or against? Now's the time to raise your hand. Okay, we'll vote on that in two weeks then.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next zoning item is approximately 22 acres at 309315 Sixth Street, Neighbor Works Petition, going from general commercial, proposed office use, recommended for approval. Mr. Fox is here and can answer any questions, if there are, from council.
David Fox, 902 Cooper Avenue, Columbus.
We have councillor Huff.
The historical designation, what did that represent on that property?
This is the corner of Sixth and Veterans, where we're gonna build our new office. And seven of the parcels which we acquired from the city, five of those were already GC, two of, two of the small, originally home sites of the parcels were historic.
Will there be a marker put there after you have your new office built? I think there used to be...
It's not that historic.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking back, there used to be a drugstore on that corner, Dr. Bryan's Drugstore or something. That's why I was wondering if that property was deemed historical because of that.
I don't, I don't think the drugstore, I could stand corrected, but I don't think it was on either of these two lots. So these are the two interior lots away from the corner.
Away from the corner?
Right. Directly across from the back of Chester's Barbecue and Little Joe's Place.
Yeah, that corner right across from Chester's, I guess facing...
I like to prefer, we're across the street from Mildred Terry Library, which is on Veterans.
Yeah, I'm saying, you'll have, what, how many parcels?
There are seven parcels that we acquired from the city.
Okay, will there be any...
They're all small, yeah. We have to replat, which the, we're waiting on the rezoning to do the boundary replat, so we can do our office.
Okay, but there will be no mention of that historical piece going forward down the road?
We're not aware of that, councillor.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Hold on, councillor Huff?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on, we've got...
No, I'm just, I was just wondering.
Madam Mayor, we can certainly do some research and, and see what was located there and if it's historic. I don't know...
I don't, I don't have a problem with going forward with what they want to do. I'm just wondering about the designation, if it was...
Those parcels have been vacant probably for 20 years, at least.
Oh, yeah, I know they've been vacant. I'm just wondering, you know, sometimes you have a piece that's vacant and nothing's stated, and then you find out 20 years later that your grandfather did this, and da-da-da, and it was missed. That's all I'm asking.
I don't recall in the title search that was done on the parcels prior to the acquisition that there was any mention of this.
I just, I just remember as a child, I grew up downtown, and he had a business on that corner right there. Okay.
We'll certainly take a look.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Anybody else want to be heard on this petition, for or against? Okay, we'll vote in two weeks, Mr. Fox. Mayor, next item is the housekeeping ordinance that would remove double churches pool from the jurisdiction of the Columbus Aquatic Commission. Any questions on that? If not, we'll vote on that in two weeks. And then, Mayor, if I could, call up resolutions number six and seven, since they'll only take a minute. Number six is a resolution authorizing a special exception to operate daycare type three at 8350 Veterans Parkway. It's recommended for approval. Is the petitioner here? All right, she is here. Are there any questions? Anybody in the audience want to be heard?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for approval. Any questions from council? I don't see anybody in the audience that wants to be heard. Discussion being concluded. The item is cued for voting. And it does pass.
Okay, ma'am, that has passed. Item seven, Mayor, is a resolution to authorize payment of principal and interest on 33.3 million, principal amount, Muskogee County School District, general obligation, sales tax bonds.
Got a motion?
Ready for action.
And a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Item seven, under resolutions. Seeing none, please record your votes electronically. And it passes.
All right. Mr. Staples, that has passed. Thank you for being here. We'd like to call up now item five. This is the continued first reading of the smoke-free provisions for chapter 13 of the Columbus Code, and, all right, councillor Pugh has asked that the substitute motion that everybody should have in their book and around the table be placed on the table for first reading. If we can get a vote on that.
Okay, hold on, we've got councillor...
Just to put the substitute motion on the table.
Mm-hmm.
This one.
All right, let's make sure we know what we're talking about before we, we've got a motion and second, but...
We had previously sent it to all the councillors.
Okay, the motion was made by the Mayor Protem. I thought the second came from councillor Woodson. No? Okay. All right, there was a motion to put it on the table. Is there a second to put the substitute motion on the table?
This includes the hookah lounge provisions?
For discussion purposes.
Just for discussion?
Okay, for discussion purposes. All those in favor of, wait a minute, no, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Got a motion, a second to put it on the table. Now we have discussion, and we have Counselor Thomas.
Give me just one.
Sure.
I have, um-
We had a tie between Counselor Allen and Counselor Woodson, so why don't you go with Counselor Woodson? Okay, I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas, to you.
I have a, a couple of recommenda, uh, motions for changes in the ordinance, as well as some questions about some of the things that are in the ordinance. And so, the, to start with, I move that we amend the ordinance by removing, deleting, beginning with the first whereas on page one, and delete the next five pages. The next five pages consist of statements about smoking and all of those kinds of things. This is not something that we typically have in our ordinances, and I'm not sure that it is, it serves any purpose in this one. So my motion is to delete, beginning with the first whereas, and pick up back on page five where it says, "It is hereby ordained as follows."
Let me make a comment, Mayor, just one. This will not be codified, all of these findings. They're just here as a preamble for counsel and the public to see before you act on this. They will not be put in the code itself, but these are findings that are based on different studies.
And it would be used as legislative history, legislative history.
Right.
Well, my, I still make my motion.
What it says.
I see.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to remove, as Counselor, as Counselor Thomas has identified, the section of the proposed ordinance, as substitute proposed ordinance, that starts with whereas on page one, and to delete the remainder of page one, the entirety of page two, the entirety of page three, the entirety of page four, and page five, up and through the last whereas. So then the, the ordinance, proposed substitute ordinance would pick up with, "It is hereby ordained." And as you can see, that looks like it's primarily background information, if you will.
Can I offer this suggestion, that we leave it in the record as part of the council proceeding, but we will make sure it is not codified as part of the ordinance?
I'm not sure why the, why there's this, they have it anywhere, quite frankly.
It is legislative history, and routinely with health measures or other type regulation, you do have some sort of findings that are in the record.
Well-
But it, it won't be codified. If that's council's desire, we'll just keep it in the record at the clerk's office.
Well, would it, wouldn't it still be, couldn't it still, if it's causing trouble, council consternation, and would not be in the ordinance, couldn't it then just be removed and cut and paste it, if you will, and submit it to Tiny as part of the record?
It can be attached as history.
As history.
Right.
But still to allow the motion as it stands, having been motioned and seconded, to remove it from the ordinance. And then you can cut and paste it, I guess, onto a different document, submit it to Tiny. I mean, any, anyone here, any citizen could come up and ask to speak on a first read and ask that they tender something into the record. Their testimony is tendered into the record.
And this will be in the record. It will just not be codified in Chapter 13.
Okay. So with that motion and second, and there's appearing to be no further discussion related to that, all those in favor of removing this item, though it will ultimately be in the clerk's record, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay.
Okay. Then, then I, I have a number of questions, and, and some of these are just because I, I don't understand what the intent is. If you look at Section 13 dash 12, the posting of signs and the removal of ashtrays, um, I believe that's on page 13. I guess my, my question is, what is the intent of this section? Why, if there is, if, if smoking has been declared banned in all of these places, why do we need signs?
This is totally your discretion. A lot of this is based on the model ordinance in Savannah, but we do know that the state health department has gotten word to the local lawyer for the Columbus Health Department that they are willing to pay for stickers and signage, so.
Well, let me ask, would somebody, let's just say somebody went to a restaurant or bar, which would be covered by this, and decided they wanted to light up and have a cigarette? Would they be, and a police officer happened to be there, would they be ticketed?
Could they?
Okay. So they could be ticketed, and then could they say they, although ignorance is no excuse, but then they would say they didn't know. They didn't, didn't know we had this ordinance. I mean, I guess, I, I would guess it's notice would be, I guess is what I'm getting at, post speeding.
The ordinance is public notice. The signage is extra, and the state's willing to pay for it, but-
Just like speed limit sign.
And would, we would, would we have any kind of standard by, for the sign, or, I know it says the, the international slash, but, I mean, are we gonna go then and say it has to be 12 inches by 6 inches by, you know, that, to get into that detail, or just put up a sign that says no smoking?
It's gonna be whatever the state provides, Counselor, and we don't, we don't have that package yet. We have heard that they will supply all of that.
Okay. Then my next question is, is Section 1314 on the next page, under enforcement. This says that this will be enforced by the Columbus Department of Public Health in addition to special enforcement officers and any sworn law enforcement officer. And I, I guess I just need to know, how, how will that work? How will the Columbus Health Department get involved in enforcing this? I mean, they won't go to the bars and restaurants and nursing homes and say, "You can't smoke here," will they?
No. From talking with their attorney, it's my understanding when they do health inspections, if they see a violation, only at that time would they make any kind of enforcement move. It's during their normal routine inspections. They're not going to be out as a force going in and out of places looking for violations.
Okay.
I think we do have somebody from the Health Department here. Would you like to address that question in any way, or? It's up to you, yes. You'd like to come forward? Hello, Dr. Townsend?
Yes, good evening. And what Attorney Ray has said is exactly what we have discussed pertaining to our attorney, how we would enforce it. We certainly don't have the manpower or woman power, any power to really do boots on the ground to do this. So that would be exactly how we would enforce it at those times.
While you're there, if I could ask one of my additional questions, in another section, 13 point 16, that talks about public education, and it says that the Health Department is going to conduct a, will engage in continuing program to explain and clarify. Have, have you given that any thought about how that will work and what you will do and what that will entail, and who-
Well, we certainly have given some thought to it, but through the Georgia Department of Public Health, we have the ability to, to provide some educational venues and everything to do that. And I have someone here with me from the State Georgia Department of Public Health who is over the chronic disease and tobacco section, who has the ability to really do that.
Okay. And then, Mayor, I want to go back to that section on enforcement. Item F and G, 13 dash 14, F and G. F says that an employee or private citizen may bring legal action to enforce this article, and then it says that in G, that you may apply for injunctive relief. I, I guess I just need to know a little bit more about what that, what those two sections mean and how that would be dealt with, and what, I, I will tell you that one of the things that I have been told, that some of our businesses are a little concerned about, is that there is the possibility in this ordinance that someone could bring a civil suit against the business. And I, I need to, I need to understand how all of that works together, if you will.
Well, Section F would allow an employee or private citizens to bring an action to enforce the provisions of this article.
Does that mean civil suit?
It does, yes. That would include a civil action. G would be injunctive relief. That could be anybody aggrieved, such as a neighbor, neighboring apartment in a multi-apartment complex, things like that, if it was in common area provisions being violated. So they're both related, but not exactly the same.
Right.
Then, Mayor, I, I'm, I'm gonna move that we delete Items 13, Section 1314, Items F and G.
Right. That's a motion to remove Items F and G. And there's a second. Is there any further discussion? We have Counselor Allen.
This is mine. Well, regarding the, I have other questions when Councilwoman finishes, but regarding these two issues, I wanted to ask City Attorney if, if, if any other business is put in this type situation regarding one of our ordinances, where they could be civilly sued by anyone, really.
Well, there, there are various public nuisance statutes in the state law that this council could consider bringing in action, depending on certain circumstances, but most of your ordinances don't get into this much detail about nuisances and legal actions being brought against business.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. I just wanted to, wanted to make sure. Thank you, Mayor.
That's right.
Let me see if I understand. So this is, basically, this is a private enforcement clause, which some, it, it's basically to relieve the fact that you don't hire police officers, or the health board can't be there, but citizens can, so they, you use them to help you enforce it. But doesn't create any right to damage, does it, damages? So it would just be a private citizen seeking to enforce this law? It looks like injunctive relief is mentioned. Would it, would it create a right to damages?
Not unless you put it in there, Mayor. I don't think so.
Yeah, that's what I was, now, there may be some other law somewhere that somebody could sue, for, like employment law. There may be an employment right to action right now. I mean, who knows? There could be some law out there. But I, I don't want to, I don't want to assert my opinion, because I don't know, but it doesn't look like there's a right to damages, but it does look like that a, in lieu of a police officer or the health board being there, a private citizen could bring a civil suit, but their remedy would be to have this enforced and an injunction to be issued, is what it looks like to me. So to the extent, I don't know that that makes any difference, but.
I think that's correct. I think it's all aimed at injunctive relief.
Okay. Counselor Henderson.
Well, and this, this kind of falls in the same section. I was looking at Section E, where it talks about the, and one of the things that concerns me when we pass ordinances is, especially one as far-reaching as this, is the enforcement aspect. In trying to come up with the best way to try to make sure that the law is enforced across the board fairly and safely, and I'm not the attorney, so I'll ask you. In E of that same section, I think it's 14, 1314, the word in there that concerns me says, "An owner, manager, operator, employee of an area regulated shall direct a person who is smoking." So if you're in, and we heard from a lot of folks, and I'm still struggling with the idea that if you've got a facility that allows people only of a majority age, only somebody that's 21-years-old, like a bar, telling them they can't allow those folks to smoke in there. I don't think we have that many places in town that do that, so I'm really struggling internally with balancing the public health with, with the same time putting restrictions on private business. And what concerns me is if you're in a, in a bar and somebody has been there a while, you're telling, the way I read this, the representative of that facility will be breaking the law if they don't go approach somebody who has lit a cigarette. So if the guy sees, if the bouncer's sitting there and sees this guy that's a little belligerent or whatever, and, and, you know, got a little fun oil in him, and if he just calls the police directly, he's in violation of this ordinance, the way I read it, because he says he shall. And it gives very clear steps on how the employees and the owners of this establishment are to correct that. If, if, am I reading it wrong, or am I reading too much into it?
You're reading it shall normally is a mandatory term, so you're reading it correctly. Now, you can put in the word may, but then, then you've got an enforcement nightmare.
Then you've got selective enforcement. Then you've got selective enforcement.
Do you have any enforcement?
That's right. And, 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 and these are the kind of things that are, are concerning to me. I, I think there's no doubt that we've taken a big step with the smoking in public buildings and things, and I think it's time to probably look if we, to see if we can take another step forward in this. But I, I think it's not going to be a quick fix, in my opinion. I, I think it's going to take time to work through this and try to come up with something. We're not going to craft the perfect ordinance for all these folks. And it's something that, as we move forward, once we do come up with some type of relatively, relative compromise, we're going to have to continue to reexamine it, and after it's in place, see the impact and, and, and continue to try to tweak it. Again, this is just me personally. My sticking point is on the restrictions on private business that serve people over the age of 21. I understand that this whole thing is driven by trying to ensure employee health and workforce health, and I feel like if we had a huge proliferation of these, these facilities, it would be a bigger problem. I, I guess I just need, as my daddy would tell you, I need more education. So I, I look forward to the dialogue. And I, and I do want to urge everybody to be respectful, because we, this is a very passionate issue, and people have some strong beliefs on both sides, and I respect both of the groups to have a, an opinion on how this thing should shake out. I just, I just think we're not ever going to get to a workable solution if we can't have some honest dialogue without being disrespectful. And so far, we have done a good job of that. I just want to urge us to continue, everybody. Thank you.
All right. And we do have the motion that is still pending to delete F and G. Is there any further discussion we have? I know you had other, yeah. Okay, so we're, we're calling now the motion for Section 13 dash 14, F and G, to be deleted. All those in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. All right, and, and now to Counselor Allen with further discussion.
Okay. On page nine, under 1314 point one C, and I, I think this is the only place in the ordinance that it talks about the air handling systems. It talks about businesses that have an installed air handling system prior to January 117. What happens if a business installs an air handling system after that date? I mean-
Well, their smoking will not be permitted. I mean, unless it is a retail tobacco store or falling out of, under another exception in here, it will not be permitted. So there, of course, there wouldn't really be much point in putting in such a system unless you're already under another exception, like the 18th Amendment store or tobacco store.
Well, I know it's an expensive item, but if someone wanted to put one in, they, even if they wanted to, they still couldn't comply with this ordinance, is that right?
Right. The, the only way they could be- The only way they could be accepted and not have to put it in is if they're a retail tobacco store that sells that product and allows smoking on premises, but it cannot infiltrate premises next door. They wouldn't, so there wouldn't be, I can't see much practical point to it. I suppose some, somebody might want to do it in a retail tobacco store, but.
Well, I'm not a smoker. Let me go ahead and say that. It bothers me when I'm in an environment where someone is smoking. I'm one of those, those type people, but encroachment on business rights and people's rights to open a business, that's what concerns me here. How far, how far are we going with this? The other, what I wanted to do was actually strike prior to January 1, not 2017, but we can talk about that later.
I think you need some sort of a cutoff date. I mean, because this ordinance is going to be effective July 1 unless y'all change that. That's the proposed effective date. That's what the state recommends, but I think you do need some sort of a cutoff for people who have already spent all of that money putting in a system.
Well, we, we could move the date to January 2018.
You could.
And because what we're doing here is we're also impacting the businesses that install the air handling system. We're basically eliminating that opportunity for them. Is that right?
Certainly one way to read it.
I'm going to ask that this stay on first reading for another period of time. I'm not sure if, if the next council meeting would, would be, would do it just, just, but the other question I wanted to ask.
Would you say year?
I'll make a motion that we change January 1, 2019, and give them, give them two years.
Okay.
But I have another question, too.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to change Section 13-4.1C from January 1, 2017 to January 1, 2019. Did you get that, Tiny? Okay. All right. Is there any discussion on the year?
I have a question.
Yes? On the year? Oh, okay. Counselor Thomas?
I know that in talking with our finance department, that there are 31 businesses in Columbus that are either classified as adult entertainment, bar pub, or nightclub, nightclub. I wonder if, since Counselor Allen has said let's, let's keep looking at this and dealing with this, if we could, could know if our, if our folks could find out which ones of those businesses that are currently licensed in Columbus have such a system and, you know, see, just see what the lay of the land is. That's not a, that's, and I don't know, other than just calling each one of them and asking them, I don't know. Would that be possible?
Then, Mayor, I mean, excuse me, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, we'll, we'll just do it as a referral and figure out through special enforcement.
Be helpful to me. Thanks.
All right. So with that, Counselor, Counselor Garrett, was, is your question to the year, or do you have other items you wanted to bring up?
I have other items. I was going to bring up, but it's been long.
Okay. All right. So conclusion, excuse me, discussion being concluded on 13-4.1C. All those in favor of changing the year from 2017 to 2019, please state aye.
All right. I have one more question, Mayor. I know, I think we have, the state has a non-smoking law, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we know how it differs from this?
No.
Well, I know that, but do we know exactly what, what we're imposing here that is already in place or what we're doing that goes beyond the state law? Have we?
I can tell you that this would go beyond the state law and being more restrictive. State law now does allow the air handling systems in bars and restaurants, and if you keep this version on the table allowing a hookah lounge category, we put in language to keep persons under 18 out if there's any tobacco in the product because state law doesn't allow people under 18 in there. But those are some of the things that you run into with the state law versus this.
Okay. Mayor, I would like to ask council if they would agree to delay this 60 days or to keep it on first reading for 60 days and allow us to kind of vet through some of the questions, maybe give us time to receive some information on the state law so that we can do some side by side comparisons and see which direction we want to go with it. If we want to go, if we want to go as far as what some of the things are in here, then we can, we can keep those in, but if the state already is, is doing certain things, then we don't, we don't need to add that into an ordinance.
Okay. It's a motion to delay first reading for 60 days, and there's a second from Counselor Woodson. Is there any discussion related to the motion to delay first reading for 60 days? Counselor Woodson?
I'm just in agreeance, in agreeance to delay it because I don't know about anybody else, but I have gotten tons and tons of emails and I'm printing out and laying all over the floor trying to compare what it's being said, and I'm a, I'm a little bit uncomfortable on which direction I'm going. So that's why I agree with Gary to go ahead and, and delay it, because if we're going to pass something, I want it to be something that's good and, and to make sense to everybody. Everybody ain't going to be happy, but at least we'll have a good working product. And right now, this isn't, because I've gotten some emails where some cities had passed it and then they have reverted back, and then I have some comments that were made at a meeting we went that weren't actually it, and it's just a lot to digest in three days. So that is my reason for the, you know, seconding the motion is because it's a lot to digest and figure out what's right. And then I got where information where the ordinance that we created was different, some places different than the original ordinance, so I just need more time, and that is my reason why I'm seconding it.
Okay. Anything further on the motion to extend first read for 60 days? Counselor Thomas?
I'm, I'm in support of, of doing that, but I want to make sure that the parties that are here, that are here because of this, no matter which side of the question you happen to fall on, understand that by doing this, we're not going to forget about it. It will come back, and I think that we can make sure that those people who are interested in the issue know when it's coming back. In the meantime, you can continue to give us the information and the feedback and so forth, but just because we are delaying it 60 days doesn't mean it's gone or, or it's whatever, okay? I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that we are coming back with this or with some format, and if it comes back on first reading, then again, the citizens will be, will have the opportunity to address council on whatever comes out of that. This is, this is a lot to try to digest and make sure that Section 13.4 and 13.17 agree and all of those kinds of things. So I, I support Counselor Allen's motion.
Okay. All right. There being no further discussion on the 60-day delay? All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, and now it's to Counselor Garrett with additional discussion.
Since we're delaying it 60 days, I'm not sure if this is.
Well, I think it's a good time to go ahead and get it out because then we can, if it's a question, we can pull.
Sure. I'd like to either, on page nine, Section 13-4.1, there are two options I see there that I could be in support of. I either want to delete completely, and we'd have to change the language in the beginning of that, that section, rather than prohibiting smoking in all enclosed places, it would have to be the following, or we can add an exception paragraph after this and take these out. But I'd like to accept bars, bingo facilities, gambling facilities. Bars and bingo and gambling facilities, I'd be fine that if the building is built after whatever date we want to set, and we'd have to check, Mr. City Attorney, we'd need the constitutionality of that checked, but that they would be required to install ventilation systems if the building is built after the implementation of this statute, but not putting that burden on current businesses. Then on page 11, is along, 13-5, I'm not sure if that would be in conflict with those exceptions or not, but we may need to remove 1305 if it is in conflict. It may not be. I'd also like to propose the deletion of 13-06, the prohibition of smoking in private clubs, and the reason for that is not that, it, it's because this is actually regulating vapes, too. There are people who, they don't, we don't really have, as far as I know, the local private clubs don't even have many smoking sections if they have any, but people are smoking vapes and they'll prohibit that on their property if they're playing golf, that type of thing. Under, same page, 1308, I propose in Section 8 that we change the distance in, in Section 8 to 10 feet outside of an outside entrance. That's a, well, I think is a reasonable compromise because we're talking about banning smoking from operable windows, ventilation systems, and outside entrances. Right now, it's 25 feet. In a lot of areas, if you've got businesses clustered together, particularly downtown, and we have sidewalks regulated, that means there's absolutely nowhere to smoke if there's a lot of businesses clustered together or a lot of windows. I do want to get it out of people's faces when you're walking down a sidewalk, so, you know, I think there needs to be some sort of restriction in there. I'd also propose deleting.
Are you saying everywhere it says 25?
No, just, just an A.
Just that.
And, and C, I would just completely delete that altogether because if we're going to be allowing, well, we could change that to restaurants, if you like, but, and just delete the bars portion since they'd be accepted. And then on page 12, 13-09, the, I'd like to delete that entire provision because that's basically saying that if you're at a construction job site or if you're, I've done yard work before at, you know, somebody's house, if there's two or more employees that are out there, even though you're out in the wide open, you cannot smoke. I think that's an imposition on the employer, the construction, construction workers who might want to smoke. I do think they need to go somewhere and smoke, but that's something the private business owner can handle. So I'd propose we completely delete 1309.
13I?
1309.
I'm sorry, 09.
That's it.
Okay.
All right.
So is that a motion or is that for, okay. Let's see, we've got Counselor Allen?
1310.
Yes. Okay, Counselor Allen?
Just, I appreciate Counsel Garrett bringing that up. The, just reading a little further down, 1310 says, "Smoking shall not be prohibited," I'm sorry, I misread it, "shall not be prohibited." I apologize. Never mind.
Yeah, so, okay. So we are still, okay, and we've got a second, and we have Counselor Henderson?
Yeah, and let, I want to explain something. I'm on the surface in favor of almost all of these, but my problem is I haven't really had a chance, and I plan on getting some contact information. I haven't had a chance to talk to some of these folks so they can walk me through the justification for some of this. While I think ultimately I'll probably support most of these unless I hear something that really turns me, I think I'm going to have a tough time voting in favor of amending the ordinance right now since we have a 60-day window. So I would, I'm happy if you want to take a vote, but I would respectfully suggest that we keep these on the table and put this as a, as an option so that we can review this as we get closer to trying to come up with some type of, of, yeah, of middle ground. Personally, I agree with everything you mentioned, but I recognize there's another side to the story, and I don't want to vote on this right now, and if I do, I'll vote no, just because it's important to me that we, we let the folks know that have presented this, that they have an opportunity to kind of bring to us why they're, why they're pushing this. So that's, that's just by way of a request and an explanation if the request fails.
Okay. Counselor Garrett, did you want to withdraw your motion at this time, given the second, the 60-day delay, or?
Even if it's voted down, we can still, we can still add this.
That's true.
So I don't know if you want to vote.
Okay. All right. And there being no further discussion, then, we've got a, a motion as Counselor Garrett has stated, and then, of course, the discussion related to concern that we leave it on the table as we postpone 60 days and do additional research. Counselor Woodson, did you have anything?
No, I, yes, I was wondering about the 25 to 10 feet, or the suggestion that was through all over the place, because I remember either getting a text or an email that someone said, "In my home, I don't have much of a yard. If you make it, you know, 25 feet or so, I couldn't even smoke in my own backyard."
No. It says it's not prohibited in private residences.
Okay.
In Section 1310. Notwithstanding any other provision of this article, to the contrary, smoking shall not be prohibited in private residences.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor Garrett?
I understand from my fellow counselors that me and, they're telling me they're in support, but at the same time, they want to go ahead and, you know, we aren't going to have the votes to carry this today, so I'd like to go ahead and vote.
Withdraw and they'd come back?
I'll withdraw.
Okay. I think we obviously need a lot more clarification on some things, so, so the motion on that is withdrawn at this time. Is there any further discussion related to amendments before we open it up and kick it back to the city attorney for first read? Counselor Thomas?
I, I do have an amendment, and I don't, I don't know if you want to do it now or you want to wait, but let me tell you what it is. Starting on page 11, Section 13.8, prohibition of smoking in outdoor public places. If you turn over to page 12, Item K, it talks about in outdoor common areas of residential facilities, I want to insert larger than a duplex. Duplexes, and, and there's one other place I want to insert larger than a duplex, Section 13-41L, larger than a duplex, so that there's no question that if you live in a duplex, you can go outside in your front yard and smoke, or you can go outside in your backyard and smoke. Even if your landlord or your spouse has said, "You ain't smoking in this house, you can go out in the yard and smoke." And there was, there were several questions to me about duplexes particularly, so I want to make sure that it's real clear that if you live in a duplex, you can go out in the front yard and smoke, even if your front yard is very small.
The only comment I would have is to the phrase, "larger than a duplex," because a duplex, of course, you could have a 13,000-foot duplex, it could be very large. Wouldn't it be something about unit size, Mr. City Attorney? Be something about a unit size more than two or something like that?
Larger than two units, however, however it needs to be worth.
Multifamily larger than two dwelling units.
Units, whatever, whatever.
That's, you understand what my, what my request is. And if we want to bring that back, when we bring back what, in the 60 days, that's okay.
Let's see the city attorney making a note, and that way we can get the language exactly right. What's that?
It was another section.
Okay, hold on a second. We've got the mayor pro tem.
What was the other section you said besides 1308 and 14 something?
It was.
1304.
Point one L.
1301. Every time I think of that. 1301L.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anything further before we turn it over to public comment? All right. Then, Mr. City Attorney, do you want to call forward? Anybody?
Yeah. Since it is going to be delayed till the last regular meeting in May, I think that's 60 days, but if anybody wants to speak tonight, come on and raise your hand, and come on up, tell them who you are. Ms. Alexander, you can start.
My name is Perry Alexander, I live at 7651 Rivercrest Drive. Along with Ms. Jamie Austin, I chair the Breathe Easy Columbus Coalition. It's a coalition made up of individuals, organizations, and business owners. And our whole focus is working to develop policies, ordinance to encourage and, in fact, require that we have protection of our workers and public employment, public places, and, and this ordinance that we're talking about is our culmination of four years of work to get it to this point. And obviously, we have some more work to do. I hope it's not four years, but, you know, we're, we're here to, to do what we have to do. But my main reason for rising is to acknowledge our coalition members. There are a lot of people that care about this. We take this very seriously. We still feel like people are dying as a result of secondhand smoke in environments, and that's just our position on the issue. But what I'd like to do is recognize some of our coalition members. We have people who are here from, obviously, our local area. We have people from state, across the state, with state responsibility as far as secondhand smoke, and it's dangerous. And we have some national representatives here as well, and so, if, I'd just like for people to stand, and, and so we can be seeing the level of support that we have here for these, for this policy. And I know we have at least one or two people that want to, to speak as well, but, but thank you. Thank you all for coming, that's what I want to do. And thank you for your attention.
Okay, come on up, ma'am. Front row there. And give them your name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Aunt Jewel Smith. I'm with Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights. I'm based out of Houston, Texas. Georgia's one of the areas I work with, and I was, I'm part of the coalition and invited to support their effort to bring experiences from other communities, just like Columbus, that have gone through this process. So I want to thank you guys, again, for this really thoughtful process that you're going through. I know it's pain, it's, you may have seen my facial expressions, it's painful for us to kind of go through this, because we know what, what we're looking for out of this, and, and we respect, you know, the wishes of others as well, and really respect the process. So, as painful as it is, we do appreciate all of that. We're really excited to be here at, at this point, really thinking about the opportunity Columbus has to join, the growing list of cities around the country, and even cities across the world, that are, are making this effort to protect their citizens. You know, you guys brought up a number of issues that you have with the ordinance, and, and of course, we'd like to challenge probably most of those. You know, some of those, I shared last time I was here, just how important the provisions are, and some of the language that's in there, the findings and intent and the whereas establish the basis for the ordinance. It's actually what protects you from legal challenges down the road. It's the reason why you can defend yourself on, on why you're prohibiting smoking in certain venues. If you pull that out, you don't have a basis for, 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 really, for what's, I know it's a lengthy document with it in, but it's an essential, we think it's essential language. And even sections including the posting of, of signs and removing of ashtrays. Mayor Tomlinson was right, it's, if, if anybody comes into those establishments, they won't know what the expectations are regarding enforcement and compliance. These policies really are self-enforcing. Communities don't tend to have a lot of folks not complying with the policy when, when the educational campaign is robust, when people know what to expect, when the signs are up and the ashtrays are gone, the expectation is that there's no smoking. And people usually regulate themselves, or the expectation comes from the folks in the room, or it's, makes it easier for someone to come and say, "Hey, this is a non-smoking establishment," you know, and there's very little non-compliance. And, and that compliance process is a, is a collaboration between the health department, the police, the coalition. And we've got examples, and we will be happy to sort of provide some of those examples from other places on how this has happened. Even in New Orleans, New Orleans, in two weeks, we'll celebrate the two-year anniversary of New Orleans being smoke-free. And their state law exempted, around the same time you guys passed your, Georgia passed its state law, exempted bars and gaming establishments. And those workers waited 10 years for the state to come back, or the city of New Orleans to come back and protect them. That local ordinance covers all of New Orleans bars, all of the gaming, so Harris Casino, which is right in the heart of downtown New Orleans, and the French Quarter is smoke-free, all indoors. It covers the racetrack in New Orleans, those establishments are smoke-free. It covers the strip clubs, it covers adult entertainment. New Orleans took a big step, and so, there's not very much non-compliance, the, the health department has gone and, and never had to go out twice to any one place. And it's not a lot of complaints being reported there. And that's on Bourbon, Bourbon Street is smoke-free. So, we know that this can work, and we'd be happy to answer questions and provide information and, and help you understand why that, that ordinance is as strong as it is. But I do want to say, two weeks ago, when we were here, you guys asked us to be flexible and to show compassion for the businesses that might go out of business with this ordinance. And so, we've pulled back. We really, we, we believe we've pulled back. And we, we're sort of, the things that are, are being discussed kind of take the teeth out of the ordinance. And this ordinance was supposed to be about protecting the city's most vulnerable workers. You're right, this was about protecting workers. Those folks that are busting their butts, really, to support their families, to pay the bills, the folks who are in highly toxic environments while they're trying to do the right thing. And they're trying to do the right thing, and their workplaces are making them sick, and they really do deserve better. We know you're generally concerned about the accusations that you're putting more restrictions on private businesses, and with the exemptions that are being presented in the current ordinance and the ones that you guys are discussing over the past week, and even some of those, those new ones discussed today, you know, we would say that you're in fact putting more restrictions on working citizens. You'll be making it harder for people to earn a living and provide for their families by continuing to limit their employment options and to put them in, in environments that make them sick and reduce their opportunities to work. Now, you didn't start this effort to make it convenient for businesses to continue to expose its employees and, and the public. By allowing ventilation, which does not work, I, I just, I, there's a lot of conversation about ventilation right now, and, and I could, I could counter all of that with extending the date, or all these other, it's an unfunded mandate if you say you can allow smoking, but you have to have a ventilation system. It's an unfunded mandate, but that's besides the point. They don't work. And to allow those systems to be there, to endorse it, to say it's okay to allow smoking if you have that, the systems do not protect. They don't remove the toxins from secondhand smoke. And if they did, those, those toxins are going through people's lungs before it ever gets to the ventilation system. It might make it smell better. And I've been in some local establishments that supposedly have ventilation system, and it's horrible. It's, have you been there? It's awful. I can't imagine, it can't remove the smell, I know it's not removing the toxins. We didn't start this effort to leave behind any worker, anybody that's trying to do the right thing. We're here to stand up for those folks who can't be in this room right now, the folks who work in those environments that can't get off from their jobs, who feel intimidated by the, by the idea that they might lose their job if they come and speak up on this. We've heard from workers, bar workers, musicians, entertainers, folks who are trying to pay their bills, who are asking us to stand up for them. So I wish they could be here, wearing t-shirts with us, we may have a few, we don't have all, but please don't take that as lack of support for this ordinance. People want to see this happen. So, we can't, with a good heart and a good conscience, support an ordinance that has so many exemptions that will still put people in harm's way. We really ask you to consider a strong ordinance, to go back to the model, to really remember who you started talking about this for, to protect the folks, the citizens, the hard-working citizens of Columbus, and not to find sort of that compromise for, for, we'll do a little bit better than we did before, but you're still sort of holding status quo. Again, I, I'm gonna step off my soapbox for just a little bit, I'm sorry. But, but we really are passionate about this. We don't have the resources to probably be in your offices every day and, and making phone calls and, and getting folks here probably the way you'd like to hear from us. This really is sort of a band of brothers, and some folks who just really care about the people in their community, and they've gathered around this issue, and they've been doing this for three years. I applaud the work that they're doing, and I'm just here to support them and let them know that this is happening in other places, and we hope like hell that that happens here. And if we can answer anything and be available to you guys over the next 60 days, we are here to do that, and, and we'll make every effort to reach out to you guys and look forward to the opportunity to talk about this. Thank you.
Anybody else want to be heard? Come on up.
Thanks again. My name is Buddy Nelms, and this is Carla. Carla, it's Jessica, her mother's Carla, but we, we work at The Loft and Mabelas and ride on bikes as part of our company, and I got to give it up for you guys. You say embrace the struggle. I've been getting hit from all my customers and friends, and now some, not so many friends and businesses that I walk into that still have smoking in it, they're just, they're not throwing things at me, but I'm catching it, so I admire you guys for what you do. Thank you so much. It's, it's pretty simple for me. I think people have the right to smoke, but also believe on the flip side, people have the right for clean air. And so, how do we get there? And that's, that's the challenge that's in front of all of us. How do we make this work for everybody that's involved? We don't want to take anything away from people, but that goes on both sides of the coin, so that's our challenge. And in our, I think this past year, we had six of our employees that are now becoming nursing, in nursing school, is that right? There's six? I think there's six. There's six, and I'm so proud of that, that our business has been able to help these girls along the way to get there, and, and Jessica's one of them. So I'll turn it over to Jessica. Thank you so much.
My name is Jessica Long. I am an employee of Buddy. I'm fortunate enough to work at one of the establishments, especially downtown, that don't allow smoking. I have worked in other establishments, especially even restaurants with patios that allow smoking, and, you know, being subjected to working in those areas, even though there's not technically smoking allowed in the restaurant. I've also worked in other bars downtown that have allowed smoking, and I fortunately enough was able to make the choice to not work there, but I know many people that are not allowed, are not able to make that choice for them and their families, because they're just doing what they have to do to provide food on the table for their children. I, like I said, I'm fortunate enough to work for Buddy at The Loft, where I don't have to be subjected to that. But whenever I was younger, my mother worked for Buddy, and that's why he accidentally called me Carla. And she worked there whenever it was a smoking establishment. So, oh, no, don't say that. So, when I was younger, we also lived downtown on First Avenue, so I frequently visited my mother at work. And so sometimes I would be by my, you know, not by myself, but with a babysitter or something. We'd just sit at the bar and have an appetizer, you know, and just say hey to my mom while she was working, because she worked at night and I was at school during the day. My first concert ever was at The Loft downtown, and it was Sean Mullins, I remember, I was like five years old, and there was smoking, and I remember feeling uncomfortable, and I don't have asthma or anything, but smoking, I'm very sensitive to smoking, or to smoke, because of a lot of the allergies I do have. And I just remember the uncomfortable feeling, and even now, as an adult of age, I do like to go out and hang out with my friends after work, but recently, I've just had to cut that out, because of these bars that allow smoking, the next day, I just feel awful, I have a headache, I can't breathe, my, you know, sinuses and everything like that that come with breathing and that smoke, so I've had to cut that out for myself. But other people may view that as not fair, you know, that they have to, they're not protected enough to be able to go and enjoy themselves, or hang out with friends, or go see a friend that works at this place, because they're subjected to the smoke. And I have many coworkers that are for and against this, mostly against this, because a lot of them do smoke downtown, but that doesn't mean that everyone smokes downtown just because you work in a bar, work in a restaurant, that you have accepted that lifestyle, and that you've brought that upon yourself. And as most restaurants and stuff, the employees aren't full-time, we don't, a lot of us don't have insurance, and I've known a handful of people personally, and also, I do have a job at the hospital and volunteer there, that have never smoked a day in their life, yet have lung cancer and are struggling to breathe. They have to be on oxygen all the time, and while it may not seem as important for people who don't get to see that firsthand, and are young, you know, at a younger age, it does, down the road, affect you, even if you don't smoke, if you're subjected to that environment. So as a worker downtown, I fully support this ordinance. I enjoy being able to go to work without having to deal with cigarette smoke, and I would also like to, downtown itself is a beautiful area, we bring lots of tourists, lots of attractions down there, the springtime is perfect, we have tons of events, concerts, and this becomes an issue, like on our patio and stuff, but we personally don't allow smoking on our patio because of children or families that may want to sit out there, maybe pregnant servers, or other servers in general that don't want to be in that environment. So just as an employee, I do work in an establishment, my finances have not suffered from working at an establishment that does not allow smoking. I can tell you from firsthand, Friday and Saturday nights, hour, hour and a half late, our establishment is not affected or impacted at all by not allowing smoking. And we have plenty of people that are smokers and non-smokers, that dine with us and, you know, enjoy entertainment upstairs and have a drink or whatever, even though it is restricted to 21 and above. So, from my experience, this is something that would create a better environment for myself and a lot of my friends and coworkers.
You all know me by now. I live at 406 Wickersham Avenue, Fort Benning, Georgia. I would like to share some of the stories of the individuals who weren't able to be here this evening, who've either written in to our Breathe Easy Columbus website, or have contacted us directly to share their story. I'm going to share Ms. Amber Braxton's story, she wrote in. It's a little lengthy, but it is very powerful, and please understand, what's included currently in the state law exempts several facilities to include long-term care facilities and nursing homes, and Ms. Amber and her mother worked in a long-term care facility. Hi, my name is Amber, and I'm 28 years old and live in Columbus, Georgia. My mother and I work in a nursing home. I was there six years, but she was there for 20 years. And over 10 year, 10 of those years, smoke breaks, and over 10 of those years, smoke break for the residents were held in closed, closed rooms at the end of the hall. No ventilation, and you can't leave them alone here, nor can you let them light their own cigarettes. So you must stay in there to breathe secondhand smoke from over 20 people. Residents get two- Residents get two cigarettes at 9:00 AM, one at 12:00 noon, and two back-to-back at 2:00 PM. Then my mother and I get off at 3:00 PM. She then goes home to her fiancee, who refuses to smoke outside, so everywhere she goes, she's exposed to smoking. My mom doesn't smoke and had never smoked. She began feeling weak every day as the years went by, and thought it was just her job and her age. But she finally went to the doctor and found out she has COPD, emphysema, and pneumonia. So she tells her fiancee, and he stops smoking outside. She would sleep with the covers over her head to hide herself from the smoke. The smoke began to make her eyes all grow slimy, discharge, and burning. She could barely open them some days. In February 2015, she got really sick and collapsed. She called out of work, but was scared to go to the hospital. The next night she was worse, and her work said if she called out again, they'd fire her. So she drugged herself, drug herself to work feeling worse, and as the night goes on. She begs to leave early to go to the hospital, and they told her if she left, she wouldn't have a job when she returned. So she pushed through the night and got off at 7:00 AM, and went to urgent care. They did some tests and said she was having a heart attack, so they sent her to St. Francis. She was a stubborn woman, so she said, "No, I'll just drive myself," and she did. She called me and I came to the hospital. I got there, and I've never seen her look so drained. I brushed her hair and braided it, so it wouldn't be tangled. Doctors came in and seemed to have a plan to fix her heart, but within an hour, she couldn't breathe and began to panic. I tried to keep her calm, but they ended up moving her to a room. We got to the room, and they say they have to put a catheter in. She panicked when they laid her flat because she couldn't breathe. She'd uncoated. She called for everyone to come to her room, and barely anyone came. They had to resuscitate her. But when, but when they did, I could no longer talk as she was put on life support. I stayed by her the whole time, me, her baby, until my older siblings got to town. I was trying to be positive, a difficult thing for me, but I tried to keep hope that they would help her. I've known smokers to get new hearts, so I thought they will fix her. We will be back eating lunch together soon. She will be able to see her grandsons grow up. I'm forever haunted by the fact that the last thing she said to me was, "Amber, I don't want to die. Please don't let me die." I want to see the boys graduate, but she waited until my brother and her sister got there and had time to say their goodbyes. As she passed away March 2nd, my life was forever changed. I lost my best friend and my mom. We did everything together, and she was so close to our three boys. And it's so sad, because she never smoked, but her secondhand smoke exposure gave her COPD, and continuing to be around it killed her. I was a light smoker before her getting sick. The day she went to the hospital, I quit, and I've never touched one since. I hope someone reads this, and it helps them see that secondhand smoke will take your life. Her heart was full of fluid, enlarged, and beating off rhythm, and had tired out. She couldn't catch her breath, and she already had bad knees, so she took a lot of medication. I'd give anything to have my mom back. Don't let this happen to you or someone you love. My mom died a week before her 56th birthday. I would also like to share, we have a CSU graduate student, and who's a local band member, he's a lead singer, and he wrote to us, his message was kind of all over the place, but basically said that his voice is his instrument. When he performs in smoking venues, it harms his ability to sing. He no longer performs in smoking-related businesses. And then I would also like to share, from our coalition, from the Savannah Chamber of Commerce, they sent us a message. It'll take too long for me to find it, to pull it up, but basically they said, it was mentioned in, when we were at The Loft at that meeting there, and we had council and business owners there. I presented the Savannah Economic Impact Survey from the Georgia Department of Health that shows that there was no negative economic impact to the businesses there. In fact, some saw an uptick in revenue. I can share that again with council. The Savannah Chamber of Commerce wrote, and I do want to quote some of them specifically, I'm sorry, with their wording. The Savannah tourism sector continued to grow in 2014, with total overnight person stays increasing from 7.3 million in 2013 to 7.6 million in 2014. Over 13.4 million visitors came to Savannah, including 7.6 million overnight visitors and 5.8 million day trippers. The demand for rooms increased 5% in 2014, with visitors spending increased by 9.2%, approximately $2.5 billion. In 2014, room tax revenues climbed to 20.7 million, setting another record high. I can personally say I was there for the Ranger Ball over St. Patrick's Day weekend, and we went out there after the ball. That Savannah is thriving. Businesses are booming there. I am happy to share my card with all of you, and I'm happy to sit down and go over any specifics you might have about what our ask is, and the compromises that we see that are able to merge business interests along with public health. I would be happy to set up appointments with any of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, my name is Jean O'Connor. I'm the Chronic Disease Prevention Director at the Georgia Department of Public Health. I have oversight for the Tobacco Use Prevention Program here in Georgia. The Department of Public Health is the state agency charged with protecting and promoting the public health of the state of Georgia. And I wanted to make my remarks tonight, because I'm afraid I may not be able to return in 60 days. So if you don't mind, I'll just share a few thoughts with you. I want to speak to two issues. One is the health issue, because as you mentioned earlier, these remarks are part of your record. And then second, I'd like to speak to the support offered by the Department of Public Health for tobacco use prevention efforts here in Columbus. Tobacco use and secondhand smoke exposure are the leading cause of preventable death in our state, contributing to more than 11,500 premature deaths each year, 3,000 secondhand smoke-related deaths. Billions of dollars could be saved each year in our state on tobacco-related healthcare costs and lost productivity if all people in Georgia were fully protected from tobacco. Extensive evidence from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention suggests that comprehensive, smoke-free policies are one of the most effective ways to protect people from secondhand smoke. It is a scientific fact that there is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke, and there is no evidence that separate ventilation systems provide adequate protection from secondhand smoke. In fact, the evidence suggests that the spread of tobacco smoke has been demonstrated in facilities with separate ventilation. I wanted to share that with you. I also wanted to share with you that the American Society for Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning has determined that no air filtration system can effectively eliminate the toxins contained in tobacco smoke. You heard some of my colleagues speak to this earlier. In addition, I wanted to share with you that exposure to secondhand smoke increases the risk of stroke by 20 to 30%. It increases the risk of heart attack, including in otherwise healthy adults, by 30 to 50%. 100% smoke-free environments are the healthiest option for the people of the state of Georgia. In addition, there is considerable evidence that smoke-free laws have either no effect or positive effect on business revenues in localities that adopt comprehensive smoke-free ordinances, and you heard this from others as well. These policies have been shown to be highly correlated with immediate reduction in community incidents of heart attacks and other chronic conditions. You heard some stories about that, too, saving local communities and state programs money. I wanted to thank you for taking this topic seriously and allowing time for public debate, and thank you again for allowing us to speak with you. We really appreciate it. We're happy at the Department of Public Health to offer additional information about the science behind exposure to secondhand smoke, to support you in your comparison between the state law and any ordinance you may be considering, and as well to support you as you consider a public education campaign, if that's what you decide to adopt in your ordinance, we'll be working with the Columbus Health Department, their representatives here from here as well, from that location, and we would work through them to ensure that there was support for your community to share those messages about any ordinance that you might adopt. So again, just want to thank you for your time, and we're happy to assist you with any questions that you may have.
Mr. City Attorney, where are we?
If anybody else wants to be heard, let us know now. All right, we'll bring this back in 60 days, Mayor.
Okay.
We're gonna vote on any of these other amendments, or?
No, well, I think what I heard from council is, as to the other amendments, they wanted you to take notes, which I saw you dutifully doing, and then get back for further discussion.
Well, we will distribute another substitute, proposed substitute to all the councilors, and they can do what they want to then in 60 days.
Okay.
Okay, next item on our agenda, Mayor, we've got an add-on. This is a resolution. We need some more councilors.
Eric, can you go back in the kitchen? We need more councilors. We don't have a quorum. Tell them we gotta take a vote. All right. We'll give y'all a minute to clear the chambers, those who want to move on. Who's the only one in there?
We have a quorum. We've got an add-on resolution that's been passed around, Mayor, the case of Bryant v. Cooley, ready to be settled by resolution for $50,000. We need...
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion related to this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed?
All right, and then we need an executive session, I think, for real estate acquisition discussion, if time permitting, that's all we have.
All right, thank you. And next, we go into our public agenda, and so we're gonna call forward. First, Ms. Linda Simmons, who would like to speak with us about a follow-up to a previous appearance. Ms. Simmons, if you would, just state your name and address, please.
Linda Simmons, 941 Fairway Drive, Columbus, Georgia.
Okay, and if you would, go ahead and begin your comments to council.
Well, I brought some previous houses that have flooded within my area in 2011, 12, and 13. And then I brought signed documents from people, signed statements, that where it's flooded at. I have a list of all the houses that flooded within, one within 100 feet of my home. And I was hoping y'all reconsider, y'all not gonna try to do anything to help me fix
All right, anything else, ma'am?
Other than the petition that I have signed.
Okay. All right, well, Ms. Simmons, I know we've spoken, and then of course, last time we were here, I think we talked about the fact that our engineers and risk assessment people had talked about this particular flood, and the fact that there were so many inches on that day, the fact that it overwhelmed the stormwater system is what we call an act of God, and under the law, the city's position is the city's immune from the damages, although we all understand, and as has been expressed before by this council, and certainly by members of the administrative staff, you know, it's a horrible thing, and we wish we could do something, but we can't do something for one citizen and not do it for all citizens. And we simply, the taxpayers could not withstand the burden of covering private damages on private property from acts of God. And so that has been the city's position. I know when we spoke, you know, we talked about the fact that you'd previously been represented by counsel, and he's no longer handling your case, and I had recommended that maybe you seek other counsel or go to the Georgia Legal Aid, to see if you can find someone who you trust and respect to be on your side to advise you as to what we're saying, and whether or not that's accurate, because I think there seems to be some doubt that what we're saying, there seems to be a disconnect. I don't think you really believe us. And so, I don't know where you are on that, but I would continue to encourage that whether it's through your neighbor, someone who goes to your church, or again, a Georgia Legal Aid, you can also contact the Georgia Bar, or contact another attorney here in town and see if they can make referral, if they can't help you themselves, to advise you on your particular case. I know your former lawyer probably has your file, he may have sent it to you, hopefully. If not, you can get it from him, and that would be of great benefit. So that's where we are, and the city hasn't changed their position, and I do want you to find peace. I know we had referred you to several nonprofit organizations, and we talked a bit about that last time. If the nonprofit organizations feel like, you, and I think you had talked about the fact that you may or may not have told them that you felt the city is responsible, if they feel the city is responsible, then they're not going to use nonprofit dollars to help your situation. And so I think before you can access those nonprofit resources, you're going to need to settle in your own heart and mind whether what we're telling you is accurate, and it may be that that only can be done by you seeking counsel of someone you trust. So that's, I think, I hope that's helpful to you. I know it's not the answer you want, but I'm afraid that you're not going to receive the answer you want from this body anyway, so. Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am. All right, next we have Mr. Christopher Reyes, who would like to speak to us regarding an easement.
Good evening.
If you just state your name and address.
Christopher Reyes, 7200 Springbrook Drive, Columbus, Georgia. I want to thank Councilman Allen, my district representative, and Mr. City Attorney, Cliff and Fay, for coming out to my property and doing an onsite evaluation based off of our last council meeting. Councilman, I mean, City Attorney, Cliff and Fay, were you able to check and see why the Rimwood Section 2 construction plans issued to me by the City of Columbus are showing a 20-foot easement on my private property to the rear?
Okay, let's do this.
No, sir, and we're not, I didn't think we're gonna engage in a back-and-forth, but the engineer is here, and after he finishes, she can certainly discuss, you know, what she knows about this property.
Yeah, and Mr. Reyes, the way it works, I'm gonna just pause your time to explain this, because I want you to have whatever time, is that you, you make your statement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? And then we'll have staff explain or state their position. But what we can't have is, you know, an inquiry or cross-examination of public officials. This is really an opportunity, we call it the public agenda, it's an opportunity for you to come and be heard by your elected officials.
Yes, ma'am.
In front of your fellow citizenry. And so, so take that time and tell us what's on your mind, and what your concerns are, and then when you've concluded, then we'll have staff come up and answer, and if there still continues to be questions, we'll refer you to the appropriate resource within the city. So with that, go ahead, and if you would, make your statement, and we'll note that you want to inquire about the easement, and we'll have somebody from staff respond to that. So, okay, start your time again.
Mayor Thompson, thank you so much. I want to state that there is an easement document given to me by Kevin White, stating that the City of Columbus is responsible for a sewer main and sewer manhole that's located on my property. If you can take a look at the copy I've given you in the legal format that states... If you can take a look at the copy I've given you in the legal format that states the easement, this states here that City of Columbus is responsible for this easement. Can somebody state that that is a true statement?
That statement, read it again.
Yes, that the City of Columbus was assigned as grantor for the easement involving the Flat Rock Sewer Extension that comes across my property in my backyard. Is that true, that City of Columbus is responsible, as listed on this easement document that I've given everybody to take a look at? If you can take a look at this legal form, the front of it says that the City of Columbus is responsible. I'm wanting to know, would that be a true statement if it's documented and recorded at the Clerk of Superior Court here in Columbus?
Okay, go ahead, we've got that down, that's one of the questions.
Okay, and also, I want to take a note that Clerk of Superior Court has not documented, since I purchased in 1994, any easement that is located on my private property to the rear of 20-foot, okay? Also, I'd like to state that over the, since 1994, I have done a chain-of-titled research to clarify if an easement has ever been established on the rear of my property. That chain-of-titling reveals that there's never been an easement established to the rear of the property of 7200 Springbrook Drive. An easement obviously will limit me to the usage of my private property. Therefore, I'm trying to clarify who is responsible legally, based off of city public records documenting the owner of this easement area. Other than that, Mayor Thompson, I would like to also, if you'll turn to the second page, first of all, if you're looking at this document that is a city record, this document is not stamped by an engineer, it does not have an attorney's signature on it, it is not certified, it has no north indication, the actual measurements of 1274 are incorrect, and the maintenance that's been required in this easement has not been done. So, I have reason to believe that this easement contains a very dangerous underground hidden sewer main, bringing nearly 300 or 400 houses of raw sewer, human fecal matter, into my backyard in a hidden underground pipe that I was never made aware of, since I purchased the property in 1994, by my seller, Charlie Hudson Westchester Builders, never made aware of by Julia Lumpkin, the closer, at that time, Denny and Pease closed my loan. Judge Julia Lumpkin was not able to notify me of an easement. I have never been notified by Columbus Water Works or City of Columbus of an easement located on my property. Presently, I feel like I'm in a very hazardous situation due to the fact...
That's your five-minute warning, sir.
Due to the fact that this is a dangerous situation, and I'm trying to clarify who owns this situation and who is responsible. Now, I want to go to another topic, Mayor Thompson, is that okay?
Sure.
The topic I'd like to go to now is addressed to City Manager Isaiah Hughley. City Manager Isaiah Hughley, can you tell me, this stormwater brochure that states homeowners, would this stormwater brochure that states the city ordinances, rules and regulations involving stormwater, would this stormwater brochure that you actually put together, I believe, 2015, 2016, apply to Rimwood residential homes and the new Rimwood subdivision development? Would this stormwater brochure apply to the Rimwood Development?
We have that, Mr. Reyes, you can go on, we've got that as down as a question.
Okay, I've also given you a blue folder to take in consideration that my neighbor in Lot 2A, Springbrook Crossing, is also with me on the fact that we are requesting that the developer, David Erickson, take his property, which is 17 acres on the west side, and slope it to the east, okay? Currently, the photos will show you, Mayor Thompson, council members, that the property is sloped to the west. In this letter, in here, it shows that Jeremiah Means would like to clarify that he does not want the property coming from, onto his property from Rimwood, which it has done for the past two years, onto my property, okay? So, we are having an experience of water above ground coming from Rimwood Construction, Section 2, on the west side, from the north to the south, and ending up on our property. I have records and documents of pictures showing this occurring. For the past two years, I have stood on that property line and watched Rimwood Section 2 evolve, hoping that things would change and the water would go to the streets, or to the east. So, basically, this blue folder here is requesting by me, myself, and my neighbor that there be a change in a form of a berm with vegetation sloping to the east and not the west of the private property. All right, so Jeremiah Means has signed that. If you look to in this folder, Rimwood Section 1 in 2005 had what they call a waterway easement, okay? They put in a waterway easement stating that water can go that route. On the west side of Rimwood Development, east side of Springbrook Subdivision, there is no waterway easement. There is a utility easement of 15-foot, but there is no waterway easement that would allow water to come above ground. Now, this subdivision, or this development, has been raised, 17 acres being proven by elevation certificates provided by Michael Burgess, has been raised, and the pictures will show that the development has been raised sloping the banks to the west. According to the stormwater brochure and the guidelines for city ordinance, homeowners regulations for stormwater states that there should be a berm and vegetation established on the west side, sloping it to the street, away from private property and buildings. So, I would like for counsel to tell me, if they can vote on a revision today, providing a berm with vegetation sloping the entire development to the east, rather to the west on private property, Springbrook Crossing Lot 1A and 2A. This would involve all lots of 25 through 33. And the reason I've noticed is that they have sold Lot 24 that did not involve a berm with vegetation or a slope to the east, and that lot currently drains onto my private property, after several phone calls to the City of Columbus requesting that a berm with vegetation, as the stormwater homeowners brochure mentions, be established to where the water goes to the street and not on private property.
Okay, all right, Mr. Reyes, that's, your time has been expended, and thank you very much. I know you, of course, have been here before, we have sent a group out, elected officials, as well as our engineers and other professionals to review and explain to you the answers to some of these questions, and I know the Water Works has been out innumerable times. Of course, you're kind enough to copy me on the dozens of emails you've sent through the months about all of these various questions, and so, I think what we could do, certainly, as citizens come and ask us these various questions, if we could, who would like to respond? Clifton, you want us to respond to any of the easement issues, or do you want Donna? Donna, are you prepared?
I'd like to hear from the engineer, and I don't know if Mr. White is here from the Water Works, I'd like to hear from him, and then...
Okay. Why don't we do that, just make a record of what all has been done, so there's not an impression that there's a citizen with a concern that has not been tended to and addressed. Donna, if you would, give us the history and where we are related to this.
Yes, Mayor, there's a long history, we have been communicating with Mr. Reyes for two years now. Counselor Allen asked me to get some information together, and in 2016, we received 88 emails. I received copies of 88 emails from Mr. Reyes, and that doesn't include the countless number of voicemails that I received. And every time, it was information that we had been over before. When this subdivision first started in 2015, we sat down with Mr. Reyes, Michael Burgess and I, took the approved plan, went through that plan, went through all of the calculations, answered his questions, he put sticky notes on every page he wanted a copy of, we provided him a copy of those sheets, and then, he came back through open records requests through the city attorney's office, and got additional copies of other sheets and calculations. Also involved in this, and I know Mr. Reyes's first question was related to the 20-foot easement, and of course, that's for sanitary sewer, and that falls under the jurisdiction of the Water Works, and I think Kevin White is here tonight and can attest to that. So, I defer to them, because they have the most knowledge. I know there have been numerous communications with Mr. Reyes related to the easement. In fact, the easement is in place, related to the design of that sanitary sewer, its capacity. I know there's been communications through EPD related to that sanitary sewer that have been addressed by both EPD, by the Water Works, and by an engineer, a separate engineer, independent engineer, that they hired to evaluate the capacity of that sanitary sewer, and they have done that, and it does have the capacity to carry the subdivision as it was designed to do.
Donna, let me just ask, because sometimes we speak in our engineering logo and the regular citizens, I'm not an engineer, so it's been assessed, it's been assessed, it's been assessed, it's been assessed, and it's not good, or it's been assessed and it's just fine?
The sanitary sewer is fine, it's doing exactly what it was designed to do, and it has the capacity. I know Mr. Reyes referred to the additional homes that were being built, and it was designed to carry the capacity of sanitary sewer produced by...
Uh-uh, Mr. Reyes, no, sir, no, sir.
It was stamped by an engineer.
Yeah, no, sir, let's, one person at a time, okay, go ahead.
So, it is carrying and will carry the flows from that new subdivision, the sanitary sewer.
So, all these various assessments have found it to be in order and meeting all the federal, state, and local requirements?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, is there anything further that you, can you speak to the measurements being incorrect, signed, certified, filed? There was some suggestion by Mr. Reyes that it was illegitimate easement, because it was not properly signed, certified, measured, and filed?
Properly drafted.
Well, I think Kevin White with the Water Works can better attest to that, because that was obtained through their office, it was not obtained through the engineering department.
Okay.
So, he can probably attest better to that than I can, he's more familiar with it, if you will. But I can say, as far as the design of the subdivision, as many of you know, through the years of, in the history of flooding that we've had in this community, that water flows downhill, and water typically flows to the creeks, which are the carriers, conveyors of the water system ultimately to the river. And Mr. Reyes purchased a lot that has a creek contained on his lot, and the topography of the adjoining property, which is now Rimwood, has always drained to that creek.
I disagree, you're...
And I appreciate that, I would say one thing is that a lot of times, people do come and think we're a court, and we're really, we're not, and it may be, although I never want to ask that it go to court, but sometimes, as I said with Ms. Simmons, that you have to go to somebody you trust and are paying you to give you counsel to advise you as to all of this and that, maybe something you want to do, so...
Not with the laws of city ordinance.
No, 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 sir, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna have any of that out-of-order business. So, let's go ahead, and Donna, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay.
Just real briefly, to summarize it, the, with the development of Rimwood and the installation of the lots, there's actually less draining directly to his property than was before. Also, it had to be elevated as part of the floodplain ordinance to protect the houses, the new houses from flooding, and that's required in the floodplain ordinance. So, that's in general, trying to address all those concerns that he had.
Okay, and I just, and this is for the citizens, I know a lot of councilors are aware of a lot of this feedback, but I just don't want citizens to not be aware of the fact that we do respond, and we respond many times voluminously in hours and hours and hours of information, so, yes, Mr. White, would you like to come forward? I know you all have been very, very involved in this, this is the Water Works and...
I just wanted to speak to two items that were mentioned, and one that, a couple that you asked about. One is the easement, we do have documentations from our legal team indicating that we do have a valid easement on that sewer at 7200 Springbrook Drive. And in addition, as far as the assessments, we had about 19 work orders on Mr. Reyes's property that he called into our customer services team, and in addition to that, we also had a third-party assessment done by another engineering group, in addition to what assessments we made in our engineering team at Water Works, and at no time did we ever find any issues with the sewer. We evaluated it with cameras, we've put cameras down in the sewer system and looked at it, and again, have never seen any issues with that sewer. Or have any issues with the easement itself, so...
All right, thank you, Counselor Allen, did you have...
Thank, I think council members, the last time Mr. Reyes was here, Counselor Barnes and I volunteered to go meet on his property onsite. Count, City Attorney Clifton Fay was there, there were two other attorneys with us, two engineers. We walked the property, we listened to Mr. Reyes, we talked about a wide variety of issues, including the drainage of the creek, we talked about the sewer easement, and I think it was the consensus of all of us there that if Mr. Reyes thinks he has a claim, he needs to talk to an attorney, and I've advised him of that in an email, and try to get the attorney to work with us, to talk to us about any other information that we can provide to make, to give him some ease on what his concerns are. I think the city has gone above and beyond what it has done with other individuals in this community, this situation, and I understand Mr. Reyes's concerns, but I think we've done all we can do. We've provided you with every piece of information that you can. We cannot go work on private property, number one. Number two, we don't have leverage to go to Mr. Erickson and ask him to do something that you mentioned earlier. That rezoning is already passed the council, we don't have any authority to go back and do anything there. So, the only resolve, well, let me cover one more point, Mayor, it greatly concerns me that, it seems as though, to me, it seems to me, Mr. Reyes, that until you get some satisfaction, you're gonna continue to send emails and ask for freedom of information that in some cases, we've already given you.
Some cases, sir.
Multiple, multiple times, we've already given you.
On all cases, sir.
I understand, if you'll let us talk, you've had your turn, okay?
Yes, sir.
I know that the city attorney's office has spent well over $1,000 of taxpayer money providing you with documentation. I know for a fact, the Water Works has spent thousands of dollars to satisfy you. Now, that includes hiring a third engineering firm to come in, a second engineering firm to come in here and assess the system that was put in years ago by Jordan Jones and Cooley, and they paid, out of the rates that they received from all the taxpayers in the community, over $2,000, to have that firm come in here and say, yes, the system is working, the drainage system is working. And I know you've pointed out that the sewer line that's on your property is cracked, we've assessed that. We, what was the system that you used to, you put cameras down in there?
Cameras down in the sewer.
And that was a cost, an extra cost to the Water Works, and you're talking about man-hours, you're talking about putting cameras in there, and every call you make, I think you mentioned 19 calls, you've had them come out to your house, all that is manpower, all that is cost to the city. And, you know, I just want counsel to know the length to which our department, our city manager, the engineering department, the city attorney's office, and others that I'm not aware of, Rainwater Management, Ms. Bigler, I'm sure, and Public Works... others that I'm not aware of, Rainwater Management, Ms. Bigler, I'm sure, and Public Works, and not to mention the time that we spent coming out to your property. Now, I get paid the big bucks to listen to you and try to resolve your concerns. I get paid to come out to your property and walk it and try to find a resolve. I get paid to respond to your call and talk to Ms. Newman and try to find something we can do to help you. But Mr. Reyes, I just, I'm at my wit's end. I don't know what else we can do to help you.
Just keep the water off of the council.
We cannot redirect the water east or west. The basin is the basin. And water flows, water flows from north to south. And that's the way, that's the way it goes. We cannot do anything, as I said earlier, with the rezoning request that Mr. Erickson put in years ago on the Rinwood subdivision. It's done. It's over with, and it is what it is. And now, he's required to put in sewer pump stations, am I calling, am I saying that right, or something? He's required to put in the proper equipment to address the flow of water and the sewer lines. And each stage of that construction will be inspected by the proper people with the city. Every, it'd be either the waterworks or the city engineers. Each phase of that will be inspected, and he's gonna have to comply with everything that our code says he's got to do. So I-
Okay. Now, we had your ten minutes, and we've got other citizens that are on public agenda and other businesses, other business on the agenda to be heard. So what we're gonna do is, you've had your time. I think we've responded. Do you want to close with your comments?
I just want to say one more thing. If you would like to bring your deed to your home that you had at your closing, and all the documents go along with that, no, you bring everything you have, including all the easements that you signed or that were given to you, and you, City Attorney Clifton Fay and I will sit down with you, and we'll go over everything again to make sure you are properly notified.
Women would like to be in the house now?
Well, you and I, you call me, and we'll set up a date.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next, we're gonna call Dr. Powell, who's here to talk about the REACH program. Hello there. If you'd just state your name and address, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Melvin Blackwell. I'm chief of student service of Muskogee County School District. And I bring you greetings also from Dr. Lewis, our superintendent of schools. And I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you for this opportunity to, once again, recognize our REACH scholars. Unfortunately, we lost a few, but we want to thank you for allowing us to be here today. I also want to send sorrows to Councilman Barnes. I understand that there is some family concern that he's away today, but I do want to give him some recognition because if it was not for him, we wouldn't have the opportunity to come before you to acknowledge our great students, eighth-grade students, who did an outstanding job this past year in seventh grade. And because of that, they are being recognized, and they have received a scholarship. I could not have done this alone, even with the help of a lot of other persons in the Muskogee County School District, and so have asked Dr. Powell to come along and assist us because we understand that with the success of students, it must come first from the adults. And Dr. Powell has stepped forward. And with that said, I'd like for him to come forward and give us some information about REACH and where we're going from here.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. We're gonna be very brief. Just want to uncover some things about what is REACH, that's the main thing, and what we're out to do. REACH is a new program that was created by Governor Deal in twenty-twelve. And the thing is that we're trying to reach students that are not being eligible for scholarship, for the Hope Scholarship, and also these students that fall below the two-point-five GPA range. So our students that we're focusing on right now are these are students that are on free and reduced lunch, that's one of the main things. And not on that, these are students are first-time college attendees in their family. So these are first-time college attendees in their family. So last year, we're the first start of the program, and we have, we selected eight students. And Governor Deal provided each student ten thousand dollars. Once they go through the process and graduate from high school, they'll be awarded a ten thousand dollar scholarship. Along with that, we have other colleges jumping on board, and they're gonna match that ten thousand dollars. And it's a program we want to continue to work on and build on. And with that program, each student have a mentor, along with an academic advisor. So we're here to promote this program that you guys can be mentors or academic advisors. And also, Governor Deal said, in order for you guys to continue this program, instead of giving you ten thousand dollars, I can only give you seven thousand five hundred. So we'll be reaching out to different organizations to see what they can do part of, as being mentors, academic advisors, academic advisors, and anything else they can do to help sponsor a student. So every year, we will, we will begin eight new students in this program. This is our first core group. We started out with eight, we're down to two. So we're gonna continue to walk, fight, and we're gonna continue to be successful because all of us have been in that situation. In a situation where scholarship in college is something different. So we want to make sure our students are satisfied, our students are successful. We will monitor and follow these students for five years, and then we're gonna focus on college. And that's our presentation tonight. So we want to make sure you guys get something in the mail by email, since you guys like email. We can send you guys some emails tomorrow so you can continue with this program. Okay? Anyone have any question for myself or Mr. Blackwell?
Well, I would, yeah, introduce the students, please.
Step forward, young ladies. They didn't want to talk.
My name is Alexandra Castaneda Chavez, and with this scholarship, I'll be able to go to college, which is one of my big greatest dreams. And it will allow me to become my dream job, which is to become a professor in the area of math and science.
Wow.
I attend Eddie Middle School.
Which school?
Eddie Middle School.
Oh, wonderful. Yes, ma'am. Yes? Step forward.
My name is Catherine Waters. I go to Eddie Middle School. And this program will help me reach my goal is to be a chef.
Wow, fantastic. Well, let me just say to the young ladies who did remain, and I know the other scholars were here too, you all have shown remarkable perseverance. And Winston Churchill says, or said, that in, that in order to succeed, you must persevere. So persevering is the first step to succeeding, and you have shown that you have great perseverance. So, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for sticking with us. We're so glad to put a face with this great program, or faces with this great program. And maybe there's extra credit in there somewhere, teachers. All right, Counselor Thomas.
Dr. Powell, before you move away, you said something about organizations that might be able to help. I just happened to look out and see some of my fellow members of the Muskogee Retired Educators Association. This is a group of folks that know how to mentor and know how to work with kids, and probably some of them may have even taught one time at Eddie Middle School. And so I'm sure that if you contact MREA, there'll be some folks that'd be more than glad to help out with this, with this project. It's a tremendous way to show what we need to do for our young people. And thank you for your work in this also.
Thank you very much. We definitely be doing that. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you all. And we have made our way through to the city, city manager's agenda, and so we'll turn it over to Mr. Isaiah Hughley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, on my agenda, I've got a request to make payment of twenty-five thousand dollars to Cody Graves.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion related to this matter? Seeing none, it is cued for your electronic vote. And the item passes.
Got a request and approval to enter into a lease agreement with Take the City for use of a vacant city-owned property, piece of property at twenty-eight oh three Bradley Circle.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for approval. Tony, did you get that? It was Counselor Allen. Okay. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, the item is cued for your vote. It passes.
Got some purchases. First, I've got-
We have a motion to approve items A through D, and there is a second. Is there any discussion of these items? All right, seeing none. Items A through D are cued for your approval. Let me read them real quickly. Melrose Drive, Boxwood Boulevard, and Decatur Street Bridge Replacement, and Waterford Road Bridge Improvement. Item two, ammunition for Police Department. Item C, Smith and Wesson Weapon Trade-In Exchange for Public Works in Muskogee County Prison. Warden, thank you for hanging in there, and both of your deputy wardens. And maintenance of video visitation system, judicial arraignment system, and security equipment. All right?
And Madam Mayor, before the vote, Deputy City Manager Hodge wants to bring a funding matter to your attention about one of the things they're gonna vote on.
Okay.
So item A is the bridge work that needs to be done. The funding that was budgeted for the four bridges is not enough to do all four at this time, so the request is to just do two, which is Boxwood and Waterford. And the request is, Boxwood was funded out of T-Splus discretionary, and it requires an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of T-Splus discretionary to do the Boxwood Boulevard Bridge Replacement. And so what I've passed out to you, and it's highlighted in blue, is the additional allocation of four hundred and fifty dollars of T-Splus discretionary.
Fifty thousand. Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Four hundred and fifty thousand of T-Splus discretionary funds for this particular bridge replacement. The other two bridges will be included in the FY eighteen budget as we go through the budget discussions for next year. So I just wanted to make you aware that approving this item adds additional T-Splus discretionary funds to this project.
Okay, we have, let's see, hold on a second here. We have Counselor Thomas with discussion.
Not on this item. I wanted to ask a question about item C.
Okay, any, any, let's see, Counselor Allen, anything related to item A?
Yes, ma'am. So this will be funded out of the discretionary fund of the T-Spluss. Is that correct?
The Boxwood Bridge, yes, sir.
Okay. And the additional funding, will that take away from any other projects?
No, it has not.
It'll delay other projects, is that-
Well, in this particular case, there was funding still remaining. If you look at the backside of this page, the cumulative project allocation balance, before the four hundred and fifty, there was still, at the end of FY seventeen, five hundred and twenty thousand in bridge replacement. So there is funding available in the bridge replacement category for this particular project, and it does not require us to adjust the schedule that was presented before. So that all remains the same.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. And then Counselor Thomas, you had additional questions?
I just wanted to ask, manager, on item C, I'm assuming that this weapons trade-in exchange is similar to what we did with the police department. Is that correct?
Yes. And there's no cost to the city for the exchange, as was with the police department.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now, that has concluded discussion, and I apologize for the jump on the vote. So we'll go ahead. I've canceled the prior vote, and I'll re-cue it for your votes on item A through D. And it does pass. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and council, I do have an add-on. It's a request to enter into a CDBG agreement with Keep Columbus Beautiful to utilize CDBG funds, five thousand dollars for a cleanup event in Winterfield.
Motion and second for approval on this item. Any questions? All right, seeing none. The item's cued for voting. Okay.
I've got a few updates. And first, I am going to do a follow-up update on Liberty District property that you declared surplus, and we were asked to get a second appraisal. And I'm gonna ask Director Laura Johnson to talk about the appraisal.
Good evening. Good evening. So we received an application to purchase the vacant city-owned properties at eight-eleven, eight-thirteen, eight-fifteen, eight-seventeen, eight-nineteen, eight-twenty-one, eight-twenty-five, eight-twenty-seven, eight-thirty-one, eight-thirty-five, Seventh Avenue, and six-eighteenth, Ninth Street. So we came to council on March fourteenth, twenty-seventeen, and the council approved a surplus to properties. But then council also asked for us to do a second appraisal to be completed on the properties to determine the fair market value. So that's just a map outlining the properties. We're asking the surplus, so it goes from eight-eleven up to six-eighteenth, so Ninth Street down to Eighth Street, except for that corner parcel we do not own. That's just a picture going from the property line all the way to the end of the property line, down by where the jail is. And that's just another picture of the property vacant. So the appraisal one was completed by Norris Appraisal Group, and he's from Catala, Georgia. And the second appraisal, we had completed by Appraisal Enterprises, and she's from Beaufort, Georgia. So both contracts, both companies are under contract with the city to conduct real estate appraisals. And they were selected during, following the city's RFP process, and they're only two licensed appraisal companies that we have on contract with the city right now. The real estate, just kind of want to go over a little bit about how the appraisal companies were selected. We had a bid put out for commercial and residential appraisals, and we had three companies bid on that RFP or submit proposals. One was Norris Appraisal Group, one was Black Sun Valuation out of Atlanta, and one was Reese Realty out of Atlanta. So all four proposals were reviewed, and we had five evaluators on the team. And with that particular group, Norris Appraisal Group was selected and awarded the contract. The second group of appraisals that we had that went out in the same RFP was for right-of-way acquisition, right-of, right-of-way acquisitions. So for that particular RFP, we had six companies submit proposals. One was Appraisal Enterprises out of Beaufort, Georgia, Norris Appraisal, Anderson Associates out of Atlanta, RE Appraisal Group out of Beauford, Frazier Appraisal Services out of Ball Ground, Georgia, and Reese Realty out of Atlanta, Georgia. So all of those proposals were reviewed and scored by the five evaluators as well. Appraisal Enterprises was selected and awarded, awarded the contract for the, for the right-of-way acquisition. Appraisal Enterprises, I just wanted to point out, did not bid on the residential or commercial appraisals, but they're the only other company that the city has on contract to do appraisals at this time, other than Norris Appraisal Company. So as far as the bids or the actual appraisals are concerned, Norris Appraisal Company, they completed their appraisal on March first of twenty-seventeen, and they appraised the property at fifty-eight thousand two hundred dollars, and they used the market approach method. When we had the second appraisal done by our second company that's on contract, which is Appraisal Services, they completed their appraisal on March fifteenth. They actually appraised it at one thirty-three-five. They used the market approach method as well, but there was a difference, as you can see, of seventy-five thousand three hundred dollars.
Yes, Counselor Woodson?
Can you help me understand how come it's such a big difference in fourteen days? I mean, because on March first, it has fifty-eight thousand two hundred. It looks like they're using the same method, but yet, it's only fourteen days difference, and the second appraisal came at a hundred and thirty-three point five. What?
That's, that's what I'm about to explain.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you-
It just shocked me, that thought.
Yeah, yeah. It is shocking. So the two appraisal companies, one of the reasons that they came in different is they actually use different comparables to do their appraisal. So the three comparables that Norris Appraisal used was three fifty-three Far Road, nineteen forty-two Third Avenue, and seventeen zero one Flat Rock Road. And as you can see, like Far Road, it was sold in twenty-fifteen. It was a hundred thousand dollars. So it was averaged at forty-two thousand three seventy-three an acre. It is vacant property. So one on Third Avenue is point three acres. It was sold in twenty-fifteen for twenty-five thousand, and it came in about sixty-five seven eighty-nine per acre. It's vacant property as well. And then seventeen- acre. It's vacant property as well. And then 1701 Flat Rock Road, 10.85 acres, sold in 2013, about 63,855 per acre, and this is also vacant property. So for Appraisal Enterprises, their four comparisons were different parcels. So they utilized 812 5th Avenue. It was sold in 2016 for $21,500. There's actually a building on that property. It's not vacant. The 809th Avenue was sold in 2015, $100,000. It was vacant property. The 610 and 603 3rd, .31 acres, it was sold in 2015, about 93,548 per acre. It was also vacant property. And they did use the same comp at about 353 Far Road that was sold in 2015 for $100,000, vacant property as well, about $42,373 per acre. So to kind of go into the sales comparison, I have Rick Norris of Norris Appraisal Company has agreed to be here to discuss his appraisal a little bit, to help answer questions, since I'm not a licensed appraiser, of why there's a difference between the two, or such a dramatic difference between the two. But some of the things that we were able to point out is that at 812 5th Avenue, that property actually has a building on it. So we really cannot tell why the other appraisal company utilized that property as a comp, because you really shouldn't be using or comparing a property with a building with a property that's vacant. So that's one reason, one of the discrepancies that we found in the two appraisals. The 809th Avenue, that buyer and seller happens to be the same person. So we couldn't understand why that was used as a comp either, because it's really not a comparison if you're trying to compare an arms-length transaction with a non-arms-length transaction. So since she used something that was arms-length, which means the same seller selling it to the same entity, then it shouldn't be utilized as a comp either. And then the 610 and the 606 3rd Avenue, Appraisal Enterprises made an adjustment only for size, but they didn't make an adjustment for the location or the zoning differences in the two properties. On the 353 Far Road, this is the one that both of the appraisal companies utilized as a comp, but for some reason, Appraisal Enterprises included an upward adjustment of 35%, with 20% as, which 20% is having an inferior location. However, if you note that Far Road is located next to I-185, which is a superior subject, and it has a traffic count of 7940 cars per day, which is a lot more significant than the property in question in the Liberty District, then the Far Road sale should not have been adjusted downward. It should have actually, or it should have been adjusted downward and not upwards in comparison to the other property. And then one other thing that Norris Appraisal Group used in determining the sales is that the properties in the Liberty District are still now located in a floodplain. So the properties that Appraisal Enterprises used as a comparison, none of them are located in the floodplain. So he made a downward adjustment of 10% on all of the properties because of that particular situation. So that's kind of all we have. Like I said, we do have Norris Appraisal here, if you have any particular questions related to his specific appraisal.
Well, and Madam Mayor, I do, I would like for Norris to speak.
Okay. Yeah, we do have several counselors, but let's go ahead.
Can you answer my...
Well, we've got several counselors, I think.
Well, I think...
Well, why don't we have Counselor Henderson, and then we'll have the Counselor Henderson.
Yeah, well, I mean, Laura, how do we, how do we go about advertising for participants in the bid process on this particular service?
I think, you talking about for the property or to get a company?
No, I'm talking about soliciting bids on the appraisal services for the city companies.
That'd probably be better answered by either Angelica or Pam.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking so that, you know, we can get them to give a good answer, Catala I can see. Catala's almost like a suburb of Columbus. Mr. Norris, I'm sure knows how Columbus has grown. He knows the ebb and flow of the business community. But when you're bringing appraisal companies in from outside, and they're 100 miles away, they get to Beaufort and to Atlanta, residential's not so tough. There are typically a lot more comps, and they can go in there and pull the data from the multiple listing services and be pretty accurate. But when you try to bring somebody who has no familiarity into Columbus doing a commercial appraisal, that takes a lot, I'm sure if Mr. Norris tells you what all he has to do to try to find comparable properties for a commercial piece of property in the Liberty District, what a headache. I mean, I don't know what we paid you. I'll say now is too much, but I wouldn't do it for what you do it for. My question, the heart of my question is, why are we contracting with people so far outside our community for appraisal services? And we've got, Catala should be as far as we go, in my opinion, because I'm sure Mr. Norris knows about what goes on in Columbus.
Well, and let me just try and respond to that. And let me just say to you, I have the same question. We went through the RFP process, and don't want to be redundant, but we had a local that we've used consistently over the years. In fact, I don't know that we've ever used the company out of Beaufort for any property appraisals other than right-of-way, because we had one, and we only did one. And so knowing going forward that we are going to have more than one, I'd like two local companies. I mean, it just, it makes sense for all the reasons you just stated. And so because we haven't had to use two, we've primarily used Norris and never went to the other. And so I think we need to go back out with another process, and we need to try and identify local appraisal firms, companies, and we need to have someone who's familiar with Columbus. And of course, I must say, I went through Beaufort this weekend. I knew it was in metro Atlanta, but I just realized where Beaufort is, and there, and that's why I'd love, because I've seen comments made by Mr. Norris regarding his appraisal and adjustments. We need local companies, and I'll just leave it at that.
So how did they come to be one of our companies? You said that there was a bid?
We did an RFP process through the procurement office with the city. The companies that I've listed earlier in the presentation are the only ones that we've received proposals from. And so we went through the normal process that we do for all RFPs. We had the group, you know, selected to review the appraisals, or review all the proposals, and then we went through the selection process of scoring each one of those to determine who we would award the contract to. Norris Appraisal Group was the only one of all of the proposals that's a local company. The rest were pretty much all out of Atlanta.
Okay, we have several others. Excuse me, Mayor Pritchett.
What, the property on Far Road, what is on that property?
It's the one that has a building on it. It's like a little convenient, like it looks like a little antique store. It's a building that's been there since 1900. I was, I mean, we went back and looked. I will say that I did ask Appraisal Services to comment on the differences in the appraisals as well. And I did mention to her about that property, that building being on that property. And she stated that she did not see that when she was viewing the records. But I did go into the tax assessor's office, you know, on Key Public, and I went on there and looked, and it says that the property is improved and that there is a building on the property. So I don't really know how she missed that.
I'm trying to figure out where it is on Far Road.
I just, he's going to need to come to the mic.
Yeah. Do you mind if he goes first, or do you want to go first? Okay, Mr. Norris, why don't you cover, and answer the Mayor Pritchett's questions? Thank you.
I have a problem. I apologize in advance. My name's Rick Norris. I live in Catala, Georgia, 70 Stone Ridge Court in Catala, Georgia. And we did the appraisal for the city on this particular property. I just need to know what question that you have, and I'll be happy to try to answer it.
I was trying to figure out what, where on Far Road, 353...
On Far Road? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you said the 5th, uh... On Far Road, is that the corner of Far Road and the one that used to go back to the F&amp;W Control Tower thing?
Is that where the daycare center just was?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see, Counselor Thomas?
I don't have a question. I don't know for Mr. Norris, but I do want to ask, you said that the Norris Appraisal Group does our commercial and residential appraisals, and that appraisal, the other one, does the right-of-way acquisitions. Is there a dramatic difference in how you appraise those two types of property?
Probably, you could probably answer that better than me.
I'm wondering, I guess...
I would think there is.
Let me, let me, here's what I'm wondering, is why did we use, if we did, a company that does not typically do residential appraisals to do this appraisal?
She is a licensed appraiser, appraiser to do commercial and real estate appraisals as well.
Okay, they just don't normally do them for us?
Right, correct.
Okay, okay.
Because we have, we've only done one, and we had a local, this guy.
The fees, whenever you start moving out of town to get somebody to come here to do work, of course, they increase dramatically from, to put somebody in from Atlanta to do that. I think there was probably a pretty good size difference in my fee versus the other person's fee. But I live here in town, and so that's probably...
Well, your fee was 750, theirs was 1250.
That's a pretty good difference to me. I'll take half the difference if you could do that. But one of the problems, I think you were talking about the right-of-way versus not right-of-way, versus just a regular appraisal. I believe that the lady, I can't think of her name now, that, you know, with the other appraisal company, I think, I'm sorry.
I need to call the name.
I'm sorry. Anyways, I think that she is an actual, a general certified appraiser, which I am as well. You know, they have different levels of appraisal certifications in the state of Georgia, and the general commercial certification being the highest in the state. And one of the other things, too, is that, I think y'all were talking about how, why you don't have more people on your end, which I don't know exactly, but one of the things is, is the requirements on your, on the RFP that I answered, you know, they require that you have a lot of, I'm also a Level 3 appraiser with the DOT, and I do, which is complicated properties for, for the state of Georgia in right-of-way acquisition. I don't know what certification she is for the DOT, but that, you know, that may answer some of the questions as to why, there's a lot of appraisers in town. In fact, there's no other appraiser in Columbus that I'm aware of, and really probably within a 40 or 50 mile radius of here, that has a Level 3 appraiser for the DOT. You have to go to Atlanta to find somebody that has right-of-way experience and ability to do those kind of properties. Yes, there is a difference between the two. You asked, the difference mainly is that, and it really comes on the back end of the appraisal process. The front end of the appraisal, trying to figure out how much is the property worth to start with, next to a four situation, that part of the appraisal process, and the part that I deal with on a daily basis of finding out how much is property worth for acquisition, disposition, whatever it is, they're identical, just about. I mean, almost the same. The difference comes in on the back side, where you have to figure out how much are we awarding the individual. And because you may only be taking a sliver of this big parcel, you know, I'm just saying, right-of-way, you may be taking the front edge off of it, or maybe you're running an easement through the property or whatever. So those aspects differ from the typical appraisal. But from that, that's the only difference there is. If she is a general commercial appraiser, and I believe that she is, I think I saw that somewhere, there shouldn't be any reason why she couldn't do this property that, you know, that we're talking about here at the 7th.
Well, I would assume that in appraisals, you would do it a little differently if you were appraising a commercial property, or if you were appraising a residential property, or if you were appraising a right-of-way. And so my question was, if we're looking at this property in the Liberty District, you know, was a right-of-way appraiser, but I think you've, I think you've answered that.
I'm saying there shouldn't be. The front end, where you find out what the value is, that should be the same regardless. I mean, now the difference comes in with what comparables do you use versus, you know, two people. And one of the things, and apparently, that she missed in her appraisal was, two of the biggest things was, and Ms. Johnson already mentioned it, but the fact that Dr. Carpenter bought this building on 5th Avenue, you know, I have my appraisal here, but he paid $21,000 for the property, and it has, it looks like an old, little old retail store from back in the 40s or whenever it is. I mean, but what he's done, he's storing antiques in there. And it looks like he's, I mean, I just went by and took a picture in front of the building. I don't guess we have that, but it's, it's a, it seems to me to be very functional. You can use properties that are improved as a comparable. However, you have to adjust the sale. The sale, you either have to tear the building down, or you say the building is good enough to use, but we have to, there's only, instead of $21,000 in the land or in the building, there's $8,000 in the, you know, I mean, so you have to, you can do that, but you have to make adjustments. She didn't do that. And then the other one, I actually did the appraisal on the, for the guy that supposedly sold the two properties on sale, too, I think it is, or is that right?
Well, the buyer and the seller...
The buyer and the seller are the same.
You did that property.
Sir?
You did that property.
I did the adjoining property to that, to the north, that came out of, what the sale came out of. And Mr. Patel, or I can't think of his name, actually, right now, but Patel, and he told me, he said, "Rick, I'm going to split out that property. I'm going to build a convenience store right there." And, I mean, but they just changed the name for whatever business purposes, and so. But that's not a sale that you would consider either. So I'm just saying, there's just a difference in what, you know, and again, you could use that as a sale if you thought you had enough data to support what he might be using or might be considering in trading the two properties. I can't imagine, I've never done that before, in 24 years, but I'm saying, if you have enough data to do something, then you've got it, you know, do it.
All right. There's no further counselors. Where are we on this?
Well, with all of that, Madam Mayor, and, you know, going forward, I just want to say that we're going to go through another RFP process, and I hate to lower the requirements or standard, but we'll take a look. As Ms. Norris has said, you know, our standards are high, and he happens to meet the standard. And then there are those in metro Atlanta who meet the standard. But we need to see if we can find some other locals who can, we can get on the list. It just makes sense. And so we're going to do that. But regarding this particular piece of property, I recommend we stand by the Norris appraisal. And, yes.
Second?
Okay.
That means, that means that it would be conveyed, probably be conveyed, maybe to...
It'll be advertised for sale with, and we'll take the highest bid on the property, but, and the minimum would be the fair market value, as has been determined by Norris.
Okay, uh, we have the mayor pro tem.
How many acres, or is this property that we making surplus, what's the size of it?
It's one point seven eight acres.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we have Counselor Allen.
I'm assuming that even though we bought the parcels individually, and we have prices on what we paid for them, uh, when we advertise them, advertise the property, it's gonna be as one block, in other words, you won't be able to buy individual.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
And, uh, let me just make note that in the Liberty District, because we are interested in having it redeveloped, and I mentioned that shill that's at Six and Eighth last week, that's been there for seventeen years. Um, and we need to move the Liberty District forward, we need it developed, and so, we're looking for someone who can make something happen on that property, and we're saying eighteen months, um, and, because we can't, we cannot sell property and have it sitting there for the next twenty years, so that, that's where, that will be a part of the sale, that you gotta do something with it, or we'll, we'll buy, we'll have to buy it back at what we sold it for. Sure.
Okay, all right, we have a, a motion on the table, which is to accept the sales price as the original, um, estimate appraisal that we, um, have been discussing in, in tender the last time we were together, all those in favor, please state aye, are there any opposed? Okay, all right. I'm gonna, I thank those who were patient enough to stay, and also, I, I meant to recognize Ms. Deborah Lowe, um, the lovely spouse of Mayor Eddie Lowe, who was here earlier as an AKA, and apparently can't get enough government over in Phoenix City. Wanted, wanted to come see the Columbus, Georgia government at work, so please, uh, apologize to her that I failed to, to make that recognition earlier, uh, Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, um, when you bring this back to us, um, after it's been advertised, and you bring back to us a recommendation for a sale. Would you include in that, um, an explanation of how this, um, property, because it is located in a redevelopment district, how it fits in with the TAD.
Sure.
Designation and so forth, I've had several people talk to me about the fact that they think that this is a TAD project, and I don't think it is.
And it's not.
And so, when, when you come back, will you make sure that all of that is, is included?
Yes, yes.
How, how it'll work and everything, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna delay the backyard chickens.
Oh, no, we have a backyard chicken lady here.
Oh, do.
Angie waited so long.
No, we don't.
But it's one of our employees.
Cause I looked back to Drell first, and she said.
Are you okay with that? We'll send you some cupcakes or something, thank you ladies.
And I'm also going to delay the transportation update.
All right.
And we're going.
We might have to send you a cupcake.
We're gonna go to.
Thank you.
The finance monthly update.
All right.
And that'll be our only other presentation tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you all, and so now we're going into our, uh, finance monthly update.
Yes.
GGs.
Clifton, dear. That's why we're gonna delay all this stuff.
No. I cut him in half, and still, it's a lot.
All right, so, I'll try to keep it brief, um, so what Tia Sha is passing out before you is the, the monthly snapshot, uh, for the, um, operating funds, starting to the right of the snapshots, uh, with the general fund, um, currently as, as when comparing February two thousand seventeen to February two thousand sixteen, is down two point six percent, the other local option sales tax fund is down three point eight two percent, um, the stormwater sewer fund is up, uh, point four five percent, the paving fund is up one point nine eight percent, um, the medical center fund is up, uh, point, uh, one five percent, the integrated waste fund is up eleven point seven three percent, um, the emergency telephone, or E nine one one fund is down, um, point eight six percent, the economic development authority fund is up point one five percent, um, the debt service fund is up five point zero five percent, um, the transportation fund is, um, presently up at, uh, point eight two percent, um, the parking management fund, um, is down five point nine three percent, um, however, this is an improvement from, um, what was reported on the January, um, snapshot, so, um, the trade center fund is up nine point four seven percent, the Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is up seven point five eight percent, um, the Oxbow Creek Golf Course Fund is up twelve point six nine percent, and the civic center fund is showing to be down, um, twenty-one point thirty-five percent, but that's, uh, mainly attributable, attributable to the, just the timing of events, because the expenditures are down as well, so, um, continuing down on the snapshot for the other local option sales tax fund, the pu, for public safety, um, we've recorded thirteen point six million in revenues, um, we have obligated fifteen point one million in expenditures, um, for the other local option sales tax infrastructure, um, summary, we've collected or recorded, uh, five point eight million in revenue, and, um, ten point one million obligated in expenditures, um, moving over to the left side of the snapshot, um, we've collected sixty-eight point six four percent of, uh, budgeted general fund revenues, um, and as far as the, uh, general fund expenditures there, um, that are highlighted, the goal is to be, uh, less than sixty-six point six seven percent, and so the ones that are highlighted are the ones that have exceeded that goal, and for the, uh, city attorney's litigation, it's of course, because we're still defending several, uh, million in claims, um, for the information technology department, um, some of these annual fees are, um, uh, that, the annual fees are due for this various software license and maintenance agreement, for the employee benefits, um, the annual death, uh, and, and major disability benefit payments were made, so we don't anticipate any more, um, payments, that's a one-time payment that we make every year, so, um, we don't anticipate, um, that, um, being over, but it's on the watch list, uh, for the engineering, um, department, the annual radio, radio maintenance, um, contract was paid out, um, the tax assessor is a new, uh, department on the watch, uh, list this month, and that's just to, due to the final year of the reappraisal fee related to the IS, uh, IAS world implementation, that was actually encumbered in the month of February, so that's why she's now on the watch list, because we've now counted it as an obligation, um, uh, the elections, uh, department is on the watch list still, and part of it was due to the, um, software lease payment for the donated equipment, and the other part was due to the runoff elections that were unbudgeted, uh, for the elections department, and finally, for the jury manager, um, she's still on the watch list, um, just barely here, at thirty-three point zero three percent, the goal is thirty-three point three three percent, so she's barely on the watch list, and that's just still due to the petty jury fee, um, payments that she, um, distributes, so that is the snapshot in a nutshell, but I do have a, a, a presentation that I'd like to give concerning some of the revenues, um, that, uh, we're sort of putting on the watch list more specifically, um, in the general fund, um, the first slide here shows a chart, um, where we anticipate adjustments to, um, certain general fund revenues, when, um, comparing the budgets for FY seventeen to FY eighteen, um, listed here is the property taxes, and we do anticipate an increase of about a million dollars, um, just based on where we're trending, um, at this particular point in time, um, tire abilorm taxes, um, we're anticipating a, a, a negative adjustment, um, a decrease actually, of one point seven million, Georgia Power franchise fees of six hundred thousand.
Angelica, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Angelica, can I ask you, this is, um, adjustments to, over the budget, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So we are expecting a million more in property tax than we budgeted, but we're expecting one point seven million less in the TAV.
Yes, that's correct.
I just wanna make sure that I'm on the right page of that, so it's over budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Um, what was that, Georgia Power franchise fees, um, six hundred thousand, uh, decrease, uh, what we anticipate going into the FY eighteen budget, um, other franchising fees of, um, fifty thousand as a decrease, penalties and interest, a decrease of one hundred thousand, sales tax is one point three million dollars, um, we anticipate as a decrease going into FY eighteen, uh, business taxes, we do anticipate an increase of about three hundred thousand, building permits, um, a decrease of two hundred thousand, the after-school program fees, a decrease of four hundred and fifty thousand, um, other parks and recreation fees, which I'll get more, um, detailed into as I move on through the presentation, of two hundred and eighteen thousand, uh, recorders court fees, uh, we're anticipating a, an adjustment of, um, a decrease of six hundred and fifty thousand, and for, uh, superior court, uh, state court fines and forfeitures, I'm sorry, I said superior court on this slide, actually it should be municipal court, my apologies for that, a decrease of, um, one hundred and forty thousand, and interest income, a decrease of one hundred and seventy thousand.
A decrease, you said.
A decrease, yes, ma'am.
So, so the total?
So the total, I'm sorry, is, um, anticipated adjustments of, uh, four million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars.
So we're going to be short on our budget for FY seventeen, four point two million dollars, and we're going to use that re, reduced expected revenue for budgeting purposes going to FY eighteen?
That's correct.
So if our budget was two hundred and seventy million dollars in FY seventeen, we're going to start somewhere around two hundred and sixty-six million?
Yes, ma'am. So as far as the increases, um, again, let's hear the.
The mayor pro tem has a question.
Well, how are we expecting a decrease in the courts?
A decrease in, well, that's further on in the presentation, it's just really based on hi, historical trend, um, that we've seen in the courts, I have reached out to the clerks.
Well, why don't you go to the slide, and, uh, she, it's, it's ahead in the presentation.
Okay.
You wanna wait until she gets there, or you wanna go ahead?
I'll wait.
Okay.
So, um, as far as the increases, uh, we do anticipate a modest increase in the property tax digest to bring in additional revenues, as far as the business taxes, we anticipate an increase in the insurance premium tax, and that's just based on, um, historical averages, typically. Uh-oh.
Okay, there we go.
Typically, um, historically, based on three-year averages, we receive, um, um, six point six seven percent increase in, uh, in, insurance premium, and so, we're anticipating that, I'm going into FY seventeen, is, I'm sorry, FY eighteen as well, now, as far as the tire abilorm tax, um, just a little bit of history concerning that particular, um, item, the motor vehicle tax reform exempted sales tax from motor vehicle sales, um, it also eliminated the annual birthday tax that's paid to local governments, and so the current structure of, um, tire abilorm caps local government, uh, revenue collectively received across the state, so, if local governments, um, collectively, if we collect more than one percent of the local target that's set by the state, then the local percentages, um, is reduced for the upcoming year, and so, um, the current structure of the tire abilorm tax also has a true-up feature, in which the tire abilorm funds are used to true-up our, um, current motor vehicle tax collections to match what we received, and that, for that same month in two thousand twelve, so before we receive any TAVT money, we're trued up to two thousand twelve, and then we receive a portion, our portion of TAVT, which is about sixty-six percent, the school district receives a third of that money, but, if for whatever reason during that particular month, there isn't enough to make us hold to two thousand twelve, and we don't receive anything in TAVT, and the tax commissioner's office, they will actually reduce next month's allocation until we're made hold.
And of course, you all know that this is beyond our control, this was state legislation that created this new system, and I don't, you, you know the story, and, you know, the promises were made that we were gonna remain hold, or may, be made hold, uh, the state's getting their money, and we're just not getting ours.
So we've recorded in TAVT revenue this year, zero dollars, and we budgeted one point seven million, so, as introduced, um, House Bill three forty would have changed the structure, um, as far as the state and local revenue distribution of TAVT, um, beginning in two thousand and twenty-two, um, and thereafter, our, uh, distribution percentage would have been seventy percent, and the state would have had thirty percent, and this would have been after we were trued up, but currently, the state takes their share before true up. So, um, that was a part of a House bill that was, um, going through, uh, like, the current legislative, legislative cycle here, and, um, however, um, those parts that I just mentioned were not a part of the bill that was just passed this past Friday, but there were some other things that were passed, where they were defining, um, what was considered fair market value for a used car, a trade-in, or what happens, uh, to, um, a vehicle when there's a divorce, and, uh, the property has been passed on to a divorcee, so, um, but that was taken out, this part that I just mentioned, and so, right below that, um, on a brighter note, our two thousand and seventeen local distribution was increased, um, at, in January, so our current two thousand and seventeen share is supposed to be forty-five point six one percent after we're trued up, and that is an increase from forty point five five percent, which is what it was last year, however, um, you know, according to the original distribution schedule, our distribution is supposed to be around, it's supposed to be fifty-six percent at this particular point in time.
So, did they change it statutorily, or administratively, or they're just not delivering? Or what, when you say it should have been fifty-six percent, maybe I'm missing something?
Well, what happened is if, collectively, because it's all municipalities in Georgia, if we collectively collect, uh, more than one percent of the target that is set by the state, then, um, and that target is a, is a form, is a calculation, the base is one million dollars as the base, and then, um, you have to take, um, two percent of the base times the number of years since two thousand twelve, to come up with what the local target is for the current year, so, for last year, I mean, for this year, two thousand seventeen, it's one point one million, I, I'm sorry, one point one billion dollars, that, that's the target collection amount, um, the max is one point two billion dollars, um, so that's the max, so if, like I said, uh, every year since two thousand twelve, they've set the, the target by that, doing those calculations based on the base times two percent of the base, plus, um, the number of years since two thousand twelve, and so if we exceed that, um, you know, our, our distribution, the percentage is then adjusted, so that if, is adjusted to what it should have been, or what it would have been in order to meet the base.
Only in the county, which, follow.
I'm just trying, are we a, we're a donor county? We're a donor county? We're a donor county?
Yes.
We're a donor county?
Well, I don't know that.
I mean, it's term that you.
Know that, but some counties are doing well.
Some counties are doing well.
Right, right, some counties are making more than they actually collect.
Right.
And we're making less than we would actually collect, because we're a donor county, just like we are with Tiswas, right, I mean, is that, is that what I'm hearing? I mean, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I don't know that we can say that we're a donor county, but-
Okay. Well, can you look into that? Let me know.
I will.
I, I, well, I'm just kind of interested because this will now be at least the second or third piece of major legislation where they're penalizing large urban economic centers to fund, uh, more rural counties, uh, in lieu of statewide sales tax.
Substitution.
Right, so they can say they cut taxes, and they cut taxes because they take tax revenue away from the regional economic hubs and redistribute them from those counties to the less economically prosperous, more rural counties. So that, it's a, it's a, um, revenue generation scheme.
And I think I heard this week, they, they've got a study committee that's going to look at this.
Yeah.
Okay.
But anyway.
All right, all right. So, um, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor, uh, Counselor Allen.
So just to make sure I understand, I'm, I'm hanging on by my fingernails.
I promise you.
Um, under a normal circumstance, we would get fifty-six percent that you mentioned, but once we start, uh, receiving more revenue, the formula is generated, which knocks us back down to the percentage you, you mentioned.
That's correct, and that's we collectively for the state, not just Columbus. So they adjust the percentage down to say, well, if the percentage had been this, then this would, you would have stayed at, uh, below the base, or at the base.
Could we find out if this formula is changed every fiscal year? I mean, is it, is it, I mean, it, does it fluctuate and ride with the economy, or is it fixed?
Well, the, there is a component of the po- formula that changes, and that's just the number of years from two thousand and twelve. So this year, the, with the base being one point one million dollars, that's based on five years because two thousand and twelve was five years ago.
So it's a rolling five years?
Well, it's, um, just every, you add a year from two thousand and twelve.
So you'll drop twelve and add, add eighteen or nineteen, whatever it is?
No, you don't. It just, it accumulates until you reach the maximum, which is one point two billion dollars. One point two billion is the max.
But your five-year period moves.
It's not a rolling period.
It's not?
You just add another year on.
You just add another year on.
That's what I meant. Maybe I used the wrong term, but, but, so you drop twelve and you move it up?
No, you don't drop twelve, you just add the next year in.
So it's not five-year, it continues to grow?
Right.
Yeah, it's cumulative.
All right. Was that?
Wow.
Did we talk to our legislative delegation about this?
Well, I, I don't think that we've talked to them, we, we talked to them when they were debating the legislation, we were against it, and it passed, of course, and so we haven't had conversation since, but I think communities who are losing are starting to, you know, complain, and those who are gaining are being, they're thankful, and so I think that's why the study committee idea has come that they need to look at it.
Well, it seems like it should be fifty-fifty rather than some formula.
Yeah.
I mean, but, you know, let the state share in the revenue, but we ought to be made whole too.
Siphoned the news off first.
Mm-hmm. That's what I know. I mean, that's why I'm saying it ought to be fifty-fifty. That would be the fair thing to do, the percentage would be.
We'll fix it right after we get, um, detailed information.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, okay, it's past eight o'clock.
So, um, as far as the Georgia, Georgia Power franchise fees, um, just historically, we've, um, collected, um, well, we budgeted in F Y seventeen, ten point six million dollars, and, um, we received, um, just a little bit more than ten million dollars for F Y seventeen, and so, oh, and so, uh, we anticipate a decrease of about six hundred thousand, um, as far as the Georgia Power franchising fees. The other franchising fees will anticipate a, a slight decrease, um, going into F Y eighteen, and that's just because, um, you know, other utility companies such as the gas utility companies, um, they may not meet the initial projections for F Y seventeen because, um, of just inconsistent climate conditions. We haven't really had a, a really cold winter, and so that hasn't required folks to use their, the heaters for an extended period of time, so, um, you know. Savings to the customer, and, uh, just not for us. And as far as the, um, penalties and interest, uh, delinquent taxes, um, I would presume that was attributable to, um, just fewer individuals being subject to the annual birthday tax. You know, I received my tax, I'm just personal here, received my tax notification for a vehicle, um, that I own, and it's twenty dollars because it's, it was purchased under T A B T, and the penalty is only five dollars if it's not paid on time. So as opposed to being a percentage, uh, which I believe is what, what it was when it was under the birthday tax. And then there's just, um, possibly the timely remittance of, um, property tax accounts. So now, as far as sales taxes are concerned, and where we're projecting F Y eighteen to be, um, and where we're trending as far as F Y seventeen, we're down approximately four percent when comparing seventeen to, um, F Y sixteen. And this chart here just shows, and this information is available on the Georgia Department of Revenue's website, and so I just compiled it all here. It shows sales tax collections by commodity, so for each, uh, commodity for each fiscal year, you can see, um, where we were, and it goes, the lightest bar is F Y thirteen, and, um, the darkest bar is F Y sixteen. That's the last, um, data that's posted on the Georgia Department of Revenue's website. So you can see where we were, um, as far as each industry, um, as far as sales tax collection goes. Um, this chart here is just, uh, it's, it's the same information, just presented a different way. Um, so this particular chart is just every fiscal year, um, and just showing, um, each commodity for the fiscal year. So now, um, on the, as far as the building permits, um, construction of multifamily and residential, uh, I'm sorry, multifamily, residential, and commercial property is still being developed. Um, however, the, the current valuations for existing projects are slightly lower than the valuations from prior years, and on average, we receive, and it should be point zero zero eight percent, I'm sorry for that typo on the presentation, uh, that you have in front of you, I've corrected it on the presentation, um, that, that's posted on E Cap. Um, so we currently receive about, um, point zero zero eight percent of property, of project valuations when a building permit is requested. On the after-school program fees, we anticipate a decrease of four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, this is more so due to a reduction of after-school program sites and participants. Uh, we no longer have, um, after-school programs in the middle schools as, as of, uh, F Y seventeen, and, you know, in F Y sixteen, we lost, um, elementary schools who were paying fees on the higher end of the sliding scale, that scale ranged from twenty-one, um, dollars to fifty-six dollars per, per child.
And so you may recall that we talked about how, um, those programs didn't go away, they just, they're administered by the school district, and, you know, they get to pick which sites they're going to take and which ones they're going to leave us with, and, and so, um, I hate to say they cherry pick, but, they, uh-
I said, and I was calling.
Yeah.
Without incurred expenses that belong to that either.
Well, we, um, I, we do, of course, you know, we're spending, it's costing us over a million, and we've collected six-
The ones that we, that the schools-
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, yeah, no, there's no cost.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and we kept the ones that were not many.
Did we turn, did we turn some students back over to them?
The ones, the, the ones that requested?
No, yeah, not voluntarily, yeah, we-
I thought we reduced the number of students.
No, we, 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 we talked about it, in reducing, passing some back, but it didn't happen.
All right, and so just as, um, City Manager mentioned, as of February, we've expended approximately one million dollars and recorded approximately seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand in revenue. As far as the other parks and recreation fees, uh, where we're anticipating a decrease of two hundred and eighteen thousand, um, the aquatic center, our program revenue will not meet its initial projections, and that's just due to limited programming that's offered at the facility. Um, however, I do know, in speaking with the Parks and Recreation Director, they've hired a facility, uh, director recently, and programming is set to begin in the facility in April of two thousand and seventeen. Uh, the tennis center revenue has declined, and that's, that decrease is just due to a decrease in memberships and players-sponsored, um, tournaments. Um, as far as the recorders' court fines, those fines are presently below initial projections, and that's based on historical data. F Y fourteen, we've collected three point eight million, fifteen, F Y fifteen, it was three point five million, F Y sixteen, it was three point eight million, and so, um, right now, as of F Y seventeen, in February, we've only collected one point nine million, and as of February of last year, it was at two point four million. I've reached out to the clerk of the court, which is Larry Love, and he's looking into it with the internal auditors to see if there's a explanation for the decrease. I'm just trying to see if it's maybe the cases are, um, we're doing fewer cases, uh, but he's looking into it.
Well, and she just said it, but to reiterate, I think you talked to the internal auditor today about this, did you?
No.
But the internal auditor is looking into it?
The internal auditor is looking into it. I, I discussed it with Larry Love.
Okay.
Um, the state court and municipal court fines and forfeitures, we're projecting a decrease of one hundred and forty thousand, and that's just based on, um, you know, in, um, historical data.
I should tell you why.
F Y fourteen, we collected one point three million, F Y fifteen, about a million, and F Y sixteen, about seven hundred thousand. And, um, like I said, I've reached out to the clerks of, of those, um, courts as well, so, um, and as far as the interest income, we are projecting, um, that to be down this year, and it'd be, we're projected as being down going into F Y eighteen more, more than likely, just because, um, interest, interest income is based on market conditions, and, and that significantly impacts our investment earnings, and when we have less favorable conditions, that reduces the return on our investments.
Recently.
And then also, um, we have less cash to invest, you know, as the fund balance goes down, we earn less interest on money that's, that we're not able to invest, so. That is that presentation in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I will be more than happy to take them.
And, Renra, we knew that, we know that that was long, but we felt a need to share that information.
Yeah. I want to put a fine point on it because sometimes we get so much information, this is so late in the evening. This means that as we're starting to go through the budget process, we're doing so in receiving requests from departments and offices for now over four million dollars less revenue than we provided them last year. So we don't have enough revenue to cover the expenditures we made budgeted for last year, and each and every department and office is asking us for additions. So just know that as we go in, that we don't even have, we're not projecting enough to cover the expenditures we made last year, and all departments and offices are requesting more than they did last year. Okay.
Uh, Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
All right, um, we will go to the clerk, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, members of counsel, on the clerk's agenda, item one is a memorandum from me. Uh, Ms. Carolyn Ryder was recently appointed to the Personnel Review Board, uh, however, uh, an issue has come up, and now she won't be able to serve, so council will need to nominate someone else for that. Got two temporary street closing applications, uh, one for the month of April, and then the Uptown Concert Series also began in April. Two resolutions to excuse Councilors Baker and Barnes from tonight's meeting.
Got a motion and second for approval. All those in favor, please state aye.
Uh, item number six, I'm asking that this item be withdrawn, I'm actually withdrawing this item. Minutes of various boards can be received.
Got a motion and second that the minutes of the Board of Historic and Architectural Review, the Board of Tax Assessors, and the Civic Center Advisory Board all be received. All those in favor, please state aye. Counselor Henderson?
Just a quick question, Madam Clerk, the, uh, was that withdrawal of that request at the-
I'm sorry?
Was that withdrawal of the Board of Honor? Was that from the petitioner?
No, it was not at, at the request of the petitioner. I need to do some additional research on that.
Okay, and, and I was just going to say that I think what she's basing her request on is that that same field, there was a field name for Mr. Sinkfield, uh, while he was still living, but that was done by the Board of Directors of Pioneer Little League, I believe. Um, so, so my recommendation to her was to maybe petition the Little League and see if they would do something in the interim. It's, it's kind of macabre to talk about, but then at the appropriate time, uh, we could take that under consideration in the future.
Okay, will do. On our board appointments, Board of Tax Assessors, council needs to nominate someone for this seat, which Mr. James Dixon previously held. On our circle commission, we are still trying to make contact, miss, with Ms. Nino, to see if she wants to serve. Mr. Takot- Tataskey is not, uh, eligible to serve again, so council will need to nominate someone for that seat. On our employees', um, benefits committee, Captain Pope, they have-
Got a, uh, motion and second to confirm Captain James Pope as the Public Safety Sworn Officer on the Employees Benefit Committee. All those in favor, state aye.
And then on our land bank authority, we are still waiting to hear back from them on their recommendations. Public Safety Advisory, Counselor Huff is still working on a replacement for Ms. Brown, and that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Uh, we have, um, counts, Mayor Pro Tim?
On the Personnel Review Board, I'll nominate Yolanda Sumrissoul.
Yolanda Sumrissoul.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's see, Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I'd just like a, a personal point of privilege, because right after we finish our executive meeting, we'll be flying right out of here. Um, April the, the third, we'll be having a community meeting for District Seven at, um, Key Elementary at six o'clock till seven thirty. I just wanted to make sure that you were all invited, and we will have staff to discuss some of their concerns in Oakland Park.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson?
Uh, I'm a, I'm a bring, I guess this is okay. I know that, that we've been waiting on the land bank authority to make recommendations. Uh, I'm gonna bring a nominee next week, uh, and maybe that will spur them to tell us if they want to be reassigned or, or, excuse me, reappointed. Uh, I've had a lady express an interest in that particular board, and I figured I'd wait first to see if anybody had been recommended from, from the authority.
Set land bank authority. All right, thank you. Okay, um, we have a request from the city attorney that we enter executive session for property-
Really, city manager, property acquisition?
Property acquisition is a request of the city manager. Um, all, all those in favor? I mean, well, we got a motion to enter executive session, and I'll take that as a second. Mayor Pro Tim, all those in favor, please state aye. Great, and please clear the chambers, thank you. Okay, uh, we are back from executive session on property acquisition, where no votes were taken. Uh, this concludes our agenda, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion and second. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, we're adjourned. Next time we'll see you will be for proclamation resolution session. Thank you all.